Mrs. Kenna says that Mr. Chris Tolson is a very important part of keeping spirits high at Centerville Middle School. He is instrumental in keeping the spirits of the eighth grade team of teachers up. He is also first to volunteer to assist with school-wide activities, even if it involves singing. Or dress. Or dressing up as Cruella de Vil.
True, I did dress up.
Okay. Or to volunteer for the bus room full of middle schoolers every day. As our resident after-school detention monitor, he has made it his mission to form relationships with the students serving detention, so much so that they're excited to have him as their science teacher in their future years. And of course, he's also a fantastic science teacher and a favorite of our students and their families. Mr. Tolson embodies Centerville Middle School's spirit all the way, and for the past 20 years, he has made Centerville Middle School a happy place to work, and he makes us all feel like a team. So, thank you so much, and congratulations. And I'm sure, and I'm sure you know the student who was, I'm sure you know the student who was still there waiting on her.
I did.
So, yeah, so you know, you know for sure why she's not here, and I know that you forgive her for that. Mr. Drayer, I just need you to, there you go. Yep. All right, I'm three, ready, one, two. Is that Mrs. Kenna? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And as Mr. Kibler shared, the next one is our Shining Star Award. He was also nominated by Mrs. Tracy Kenna, and our January Shining Star is Mr. Corby Mrs. Kenna says that Mr. Corby Loughlin is the Peels Teacher at Centerville Middle School. As the ringleader of the district-wide program, he is responsible for planning, instructing, and assessing all of the curriculum taught to the students in the program. He's also responsible for managing behaviors and helping students make better choices. This is where he truly shines. He is an expert in building relationships with his students, and as a result, they are always willing to go above and beyond for him. They complete their work, they manage their behaviors, they show success within their program, and they build on what they have learned to meet their potential. Due to Mr. Loughlin's hard work within this program and his unwavering support of his students, they have bright, shining futures in high school and beyond. So, thank you very much for your dedication. And another round of applause for all of you. I think that was everybody.
Hey, Carrie, do we need to go get the other?
Yeah.
I can get it.
I don't think so.
Just get on the next, we're getting the door.
Congratulations, thank you.
Okay. So, before we get to the next agenda item, I'd like to read a little statement. During closed session, Dr. Salins notified the board that she will not be seeking reappointment at the end of her current contract term, which ends on June 30th of 2025. We really appreciate Dr. Salins' 33 years of service to the public education in Maryland and her four years of service to Queen Anne's County Public Schools. In the coming weeks, the board will begin the process of selecting a new superintendent to serve after Dr. Salins' terms expires. We will keep the public updated and informed as we embark on this journey. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're gonna move to board involvement, and I'm gonna start on the end, and we'll go way back.
So, I was able to attend a bunch of holiday and band and strings concert, and as always, all the schools put on an amazing show. Give some kudos to Sellersville, they were able to have, host their first Christmas parade, and there was a bunch of different schools. I saw the clay team, they had a big flute, the kids in the band and the strings program were marching and throwing candy, and I was amazed at how many people had come out and how many people were actually in the parade. So, good job to them for their first parade. And then I was able to attend the first MAB budget session.
I sadly, due to the holidays and snow and kids, and I was not able to attend any outside events other than ones that were handled at my children's school. However, their school did an amazing job from Elf on the Shelf on top of the building to Christmas parties and the unwavering dedication and commitment of our teachers to make sure that the holiday season was fun and festive and the kids made some memories, but I have all the plans in the month of January to tackle it, get out there.
I don't know, it's getting busy.
I went to Stevensville Middle. It was the day of the reindeer games right before Christmas break, and I was able to meet the principal and a lot of the staff, and then the best part was watching the teachers versus students hockey game. And I even caught the puck, which I heard is good luck, but anyway. So, I guess the Giving the Edge Foundation came in and did a great field day for the students, and then I went to MAB training.
So, I went and attended the Mistletoe Mania at Sellersville Middle School. That was awesome, lots of vendors out, lots of teachers doing lots of activities for the kids, and a great opportunity for people to do some quick Christmas shopping if you hadn't already started. I was a little behind, so I helped out a lot. And I also attended the legislative meeting for MAB. So, there's some, a lot of new activities that are being taken care of and in support of schools and our education systems.
This month, I was able to attend the Winter Dance Concert put on by Ms. Tyler. That was pretty fantastic. She did a fantastic job, brought in some outside individuals that have years upon years of dance experience, and it evidently showed that it's coming into our classrooms that she teaches during the day with the skills the students are actually developing. And I was also able to attend one of the wrestling matches, one of the duels that Queen Anne had. Unfortunately, they fell in that duel, and as Kendra said, I've been real busy this month, so I was out of town for a couple of weeks and with the kids, so those were the only two things I could get into. But tomorrow, we have a big game, we got Kent Island versus Queen Anne, boys and girls varsity basketball, so I will be out there showing my support tomorrow here at the Queen Anne's High School.
Very nice. All right, our student board members, who wants to go first?
Um, I will.
Got it.
So, I don't really have a lot to tell you guys, because I feel like January is almost over, but January 17th, our hybrid classes have their final exams, and then we also have a Winter Dance from 6 to 8, the Blizzard Ball. On January 20th, the school's closed, yes, and then the 21st, final exams for first and second period, and then the next day, third and fourth, and then on the 20th, on the 30th, we have a scheduling, scheduling information night, and the 31st, reports are emailed home.
Thanks. All right. So, this week, we have 10th grade MCAP testing for Algebra I and English Language Arts. I know tonight, there's the JV basketball games going on right now, Kent Island versus QA, and then tomorrow, of course, as mentioned, I'll hopefully be there for that. And then we have finals, of course, on the 21st and 22nd of January, and then makeups are the following week, I think, on the 23rd. Wait, no, that's the same week. And then we come back after finals on the 28th for the start of the second semester, which is exciting, already halfway through. And then we're looking forward to Dr. Salins', your superintendent visit on the 30th. And then the 31st, we have our Student of the Month Ceremony, which is always well-attended. That's always really nice when everyone comes together for that. And then February 1st, this is before the next board meeting, so I thought I'd mention, we have our interact club at our schools, they sponsored the Pullerberg Plunge that will be going on at Sandy Point State Park. So, that should be fun for everyone involved in that, and that's all, not too much.
Are you gonna do it?
I don't think I, you know what, maybe I will. Maybe I will.
Just guilt her into it.
I want to do it once, so.
Some people like it.
You know this was recorded and going out to everyone, right?
Well, I, I'm taking that as a challenge, so maybe I'll sign up for it now.
There you go. What day is it, being held?
February 1st. If it's not too late, sign up.
For you, my gracious, it's not.
Good luck, sweetheart.
Good luck.
Dr. Salins?
Yes, so actually, I want to kind of go off my normal, I did get an opportunity to get out to many of the schools and do lots of things, but I want to talk about the snow and the weather and where we are with everything. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone out there, and they know who they are, who helped to try their best to get us back in school. Everybody had their best effort out there to do it, but the weather just would not cooperate for us. It was unfortunate. So, many people are wondering, because we had two days built into our schedule, of whether we were going to use both of those days to make up. Well, that, even though it's built into the schedule and the schedule is approved by the state board, we still have to go ask them to waive that day. So, Martin Luther King will be a day off for students, as originally planned, because the state board doesn't meet until the end of the month, and by the time they would get back to us, it would be too late, right? However, we will be putting in, we notified the board, we will be putting in for a waiver for President's Day. We do anticipate getting approval to go to school on President's Day, so we'd like to kind of get that out there and spread the word, to please plan on being in session on President's Day as we move through the motion and the process to be approved at the state level. That puts us at basically that Monday, so originally, we were slated for that Friday, I believe it was the 13th. That pushes us to that Monday, but also remember, we have the right to ask for a waiver, we might not be granted to not have to go to school and end on a Monday. It doesn't make a lot of sense to put all buses on the road for a half-day on a Monday when you're closing down for the school year. So, we successfully did that last year, we ended on a Monday, we asked for the waiver, it was granted. I don't know whether they would do that or not this year, and I don't know whether we're finished with our weather, so I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves, but for right now, if we had no other weather events and we were approved to go on President's Day, our last day would be that Monday, and we would come to the board to ask for, to seek another waiver to end on that Friday. So, we'll see. Nobody pray for snow, I know there's kids out there praying for snow, and I say, no more snow. So, thank you.
All right. This is when we get into citizens' comments. Before we begin, we ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines. Speakers should sign the roster, including their telephone number and address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. Statements to the board should relate to a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Comments about the actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comments and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or the board president. If you have a specific question, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question. The board respects your desire and right to convey your message freely, but asks as a courtesy to this board and our citizens that you show respect for all. Amanda De.
Denofriel. You're gonna get it one day, you're gonna nail it one day.
I'm gonna.
I'll just keep coming back, and you're gonna nail it.
I think you're gonna have to print it for me, because it's the right.
It's like that actor on, that really weird actor that was in that, that Full Metal Jacket.
I saw that.
Denofriel.
Yeah.
Same man, he's probably a cousin somewhere.
Hello, everyone. Welcome new board members. I wrote in a public comment last month, I wasn't able to attend last month's meeting, but I wrote in a public comment. Part of it was, I'm happy to have new board members, I'm happy to have people who are going to hopefully think in new and different and critical ways, and it's nice to see some fresh faces. And part of what I wrote last month goes into what I'll say this month, but it is the value of our human resources. That is our greatest resource for many places, but especially in educational system where people are working with K through 12, very young children. So, I think it's very important that we stick to what was in the blueprint goals, which I actually read through and really liked, I thought that was very well done, and I hope that we can stick to that in a better way. Part of sticking to that, I believe, though, comes into a bit of a conflict for me with the agenda item for later on tonight on the Tier Two funding for $70,000 that is going to be benefiting four of the eight Tier Two schools. Knowing what I do about Tier Two funding and the difficulty in being able to obtain that funding and put it to good use, I think that it would be nice if we had some other options that may benefit more than just 50% of the schools that are able to receive these funds. So, I would ask that when you have to vote on this tonight, perhaps we can put a pin in it and come up with alternatives that might benefit more children at more schools. That would help empower our teachers and help empower our children. These funds are not easy to get, and I can come here and hear that they're not easy to get, but before we go ahead and spend it, let's see what we can do that has the greatest impact on the greatest number of our teachers and of our students, so that we can go ahead and follow those blueprint goals of having transparency and giving teachers a voice and respecting their opinions while they're struggling with increased class sizes and lack of support through staff members that are supposed to be there to help with tutoring or other vital things around our schools. One of the awards given tonight, I will point out, was given to a woman who is doing two jobs, and while she is fantastic, and I have seen her do her job, she is wonderful. It shouldn't be the necessity that she is doing two jobs, it shouldn't be the necessity that she has to do that. It's great that she did it, but they need the support, so if we have that money, put it to better use. Thank you.
Excuse me. Cecilia Mitchell.
Look at all those smiles. Happy New Year. My name is Cecilia Mitchell, and I'm the president of QACEA. Happy New Year. And before I go to my bullet points, because I didn't write anything out tonight, so be prepared for an avalanche. When you mentioned the 20th being a holiday, let's be sure we clarify that that's for everybody, because somebody's gonna hear it's just students, and then the question's gonna be, well, what about teachers and staff? So, that is still a day off for.
They can't have students in session without our teachers.
Well, you know, you know how people listen.
That is for all.
Sometimes people don't listen very well, I was like, I, my phone's gonna go blow up any minute. And welcome to the new board members. You guys got an invitation from our association to stop in in our meeting. Dr. Salins and I have been talking in our monthly meetings about coalition building and relationships and how to move forward as we deal with legislative issues and budget crises, and that is a step in that direction. My next meeting with Dr. Salins is the 28th, we were able to reschedule that because of the holiday, and we'll be talking more, the two of us, about how we can move forward with that, so we'll put that on as an agenda item. With regard to agenda, I'm here tonight just to speak on the item that was just referenced with regard to the contract that's being presented this evening. Representing a body that was asked to take or return money back in light of a budget crisis that we know is likely to continue, we don't see any light at the end of the tunnel, taking on new expenditures seems to me to be unnecessary. So, I would encourage us to kind of step back from that, there are other things that are coming up tonight, things like desks and things that we use every day, and if we're setting priorities, I don't know why we need to take on something new when we need to be taking care of what we have. So, I would ask you to just hold on that, please. So, that's that. Thank you very much. Happy New Year, and hopefully I'll see some of you guys next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much time left that I can use next time.
Doesn't roll over. It does not roll over. Ashley LuKing?
Good evening, board members, executive team. I'm also here to discuss the Instructional Empowerment Contract that is on the table tonight. I do not think it should be approved tonight without transparency into this company's selection as the most appropriate spending of our Title II A funds. The county has cut reimbursement for necessary professional development, which this is not, and this contract does not specifically relate to any blueprint requirements. The sole source vendor document provided is weak at best, therefore requiring other options to be presented. A quick timeline for you, in 2017, Dr. Salins signed a multimillion-dollar contract with LSI in Carrollene County. Looking at their Maryland report card data for 2018 and 2019, elementary schools made some improvements, however, all schools failed to meet annual targets for academic achievement. Three of the four schools participating in this contract are middle and high schools. It doesn't make sense. In 2021, LSI went out of business, reorganizing under the Instructional Empowerment name you'll hear tonight. Currently, Kent Island High School serves as a pilot reading the book The Power of Student Teams by CEO Michael Toth, where Dr. Salins is acknowledged as a reviewer. Administration and leadership attended his very costly conference in Florida over the summer in 2024. A conference is scheduled for June of 2025 at Chesapeake College with a stipend for attendees. Teachers, administrators, and employees fear retaliation in our current school climate. Over the past few days, I have been able to collect viewpoints to share anonymously for them. The following are their statements. I know I will run out of time before I can read all 13 of them, but they have been shared with board members and Dr. Salins. We have started this book study at Kent Island High School, it does not show how this team's strategy will be implemented and how to address the barriers. Dr. Salins is mentioned in this book, and kickbacks have come to our mind. The whole thing doesn't sit well with me. Why this program? Why now? I have not seen any data to support that this works, we should do a lot more investigating before we spend this much money. This isn't a solution, in upper-grade levels and with challenging content, lower-performing students lack the ability to lead instruction or participate in this model. They do not share the same background information or academic confidence. These students continue to fall farther behind without direct instruction. I'm taking part in the book study. The main problem I see is that the book is very theoretical. If it's going to be put in place, teachers need real professional development, including videos of implementation at various grades and in various content areas. There are some resources online, but they are less than impressive. The book outlines a program that would work under ideal circumstances. We don't teach under ideal circumstances. If students are placed in collaborative groups of four, one is absent, one is unwilling to participate, a very real scenario, this simply doesn't work. We've been told that teachers aren't expected to use this every day, but it seems that it would have to be done frequently for students to learn how to collaborate effectively. Pull up state report cards and show little to no evidence of success in high schools. I'm very concerned teaching a state-tested class with heavy content using student teams. Teachers from Carrollene County told me it requires a lot of PD and observations, it puts more on teachers' backs. It goes on, it goes on, but thank you.
We do have your email, so thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ash. Coral Adams?
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Sellersville, Maryland. I am here to speak today about the same budget item that's been coming up, the empowerment, our instructional empowerment. I did not pilot this, in fact, I only heard about it recently, but I am working with one of the piloted programs, or I am piloting programs for next year's middle school curriculum. So, this is the first time I've done that, got a little bit of background on the kind of research that has to be done, the kind of vetting and qualifications that a curriculum has to meet, and just out of curiosity, I was searching on the interwebs for Instructional Empowerment, and the thing that bothers me is that I can't find any ratings, and I can't find any peer review. As a professional, as a 20-year veteran in the classroom, peer review is really important. If we're gonna bring, implement a new program into a classroom, I need to know, I want to know as a teacher and as a parent, that this is something that's been peer-reviewed and shown to work, and I can't find that anywhere. I'm not saying it doesn't exist, I fully believe that Ms. Passan has done much more research than I have, she's very competent, but it's still, it's problematic when I can't find anything. Whereas, when you search other curriculums, when I search the, the programs that we have in place currently, it's much easier to find information and to find studies that back it up. So, in my professional opinion, I don't support this, buying this program, because I don't think that it's going to have, it doesn't have, have the backup and the study that it needs. From a personal perspective, I'm currently teaching remediation in class, because all of our people that taught remediation had to be let go, and those positions had to be moved because of the budget crisis. So, that was pushed on us teachers into the classroom. As it stands, I do not feel fully trained and competent in the program that I'm teaching, but I'm learning to fly this plane in the air, like we do in education, apparently. So, if next year I can teach it better, because I've done it this year, if we're implementing new programs, then it's yet again, teachers who already have more work this year than last year, will have more work next year than we do this year, trying to figure out a program for our lowest-performing students. We cannot risk programs that are, are not vetted, we cannot risk programs that are not, we don't have 100% confidence in for students that are reading two and three and four grades below level. I have kids in my middle school class that are reading at a first-grade level, I can't risk a year of them on a program that I don't know for sure is gonna make a difference. I need to know for sure. I'm all for, as a former special educator, I'm all for multiple programs. I think that is great, it is so much easier to meet students' needs when there's more than one option, because one piece does not fit all students, but I can't find anything to back up that this is the correct piece to choose. So, that's just my professional opinion, take it for whatever you want, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that would be the list, unless there's anyone else that did not happen to sign the signing sheet. All right. Then we will move on to our Human Resources Report. You're absolutely right, because there are no other questions, because we talked about it during closed session, because of what it is. I need a motion.
Can I make a motion to approve the January 8th, 2025 Human Resources Report as presented?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. We'll move on to 602, Instructional Empowerment Contract. Ms. Passan?
Good evening, Happy New Year. President Bent, new members of the board, Dr. Salins, members of the executive team, I am Ms. Passan, my primary role with the district is as the grades 3 through 12 English Language Arts Supervisor. There are four title grants that live with the CNI team, and they are doled out. Apparently, tonight, I've drawn the amokai straw of being the Title II A Grant Manager. Actually, I love Title II, and I believe in it, and I'm glad that all the people who spoke publicly are still here, because I can address different concerns they brought up. I know we can't get in dialogue, but I can certainly address what they brought up. So, the Title II grant of which I am in charge is for the hiring, retention, and training, i.e. professional development of all educators in the school system. We are a small district, every year, we get our allotment from the feds, the allotment for FY24 was about 188 in total, our allotment for FY25 dropped by about 35%, it's at around 150. So, as grants work, they're not, so, they're not under the discretion of the Grant Manager. All decisions are collective decisions made by the executive team, CNI, stakeholders, qualitative data that Dr. Salins gathers when she does meetings with students and teachers, information we gather when we hear public comments, qualitative data we gather as CNI supervisors when we do our program monitoring visits, a lot goes into making decisions for all our title grants. They are not arbitrary, or, you know, I don't go to Dr. Salins' with a lump sum, and she gives me my marching orders as to what to do with it. It's a collaborative decision, and I come with all ideas based on what I've, I've seen and heard. So, I'm just giving you kind of the timeline of how I got here tonight. So, in this past summer, we were able to braid FY23 and FY24 funds together, because there was residual leftover in FY23, for A&amp;S to attend a conference hosted by Instructional Empowerment, and the focus of that, of that conference was on student academic teams. And the basics of student academic teams, which is the professional development we're looking to bring to our three neediest schools in the county, is to increase. information we gather when we hear public comments, qualitative data we gather as CNI supervisors when we do our program monitoring visits. A lot goes into making decisions for all our title grants. They are not arbitrary, or, you know, I don't go to Dr. Salins with a lump sum, and she gives me my marching orders as to what to do with it. It's a collaborative decision, and I come with all ideas based on what I've seen and heard. So I'm just giving you kind of the timeline of how I got here tonight. So in this past summer, we were able to braid FY23 and FY24 funds together, because there was residual leftover in FY23, for A&amp;S to attend a conference hosted by instructional empowerment. And the focus of that conference was on student academic teams. And the basics of student academic teams, which is the professional development we're looking to bring to our three neediest schools in the county, is to increase student discourse, which is directly tied to neuroscience and the science of learning. Direct instruction by teachers is absolutely positively important and essential, but it can't make up the entire instructional time that kids are in front of teachers. They need to be engaged in productive struggle and inquiry and on working to solve a problem together. When we came back, we knew that we didn't have funding to bring student academic teams to our school. Sadly, as has been pointed out, we did have a reduction in staff, and a lot of the staff we had to let go was novice teachers, new teachers. I law were required to have a new teacher induction program that involves a week of induction and instructional coaches. That gets paid from Title II A grants. Now, please keep in mind that we write the grant about eight months ahead of the time that we start spending it. So it was September of this year. We realized that we had budgeted $80,000 for instructional coaches in the induction program, and we only needed about $30,000 of that. We did amend the grant with the hopes, and this may have been one of, one of the public speakers referenced cutting reimbursement. We had hoped to pay our primary teachers for science of reading training that they have to get. We submitted an amendment to do that, and then were told we can't use Title II A dollars to fund what's mandated in Blueprint. So that seems counterintuitive, but that's the way that the law works and grant funding works. So then the wondering became, do we do, do we bring student teams, the 101, the first part of this instructional empowerment to our neediest schools? And so I was sent to find pricing. Obviously, I knew the data already, because the data had come in, and we decided to do one school per level and kind of have them all in the feeder chain. So that's how those schools were decided. Southerstville Elementary, Southerstville Middle, and Queen Anne's County High School. Ms. Denofrio's point, did I say it right? I would, we would love to bring it everywhere. If I had, if we had the funding, it probably would have been a consideration, but this is all amended funding that we're trying to make good use of and bring our learning back to 200 staff members that would impact 2,000 students. There is a need for improved student discourse. Our teachers do incredible work. Coral is an ELA teacher. I've been in her classroom and had a lot of fun in her classroom. We're doing great things when we have student collaboration, when we have student groups. They are part of instruction in any content about three times a week, but they could always be elevated. And I went through the training myself, and I saw instances where I was like, you know what? That grade level only needs a little bit. Or that grade level, they're going to need these two parts of the program to really bolster the student collaboration component of their instructional daily plan. So, and that was thinking that was shared, because yes, we were in Florida, but we were all at each other with our learning and excited to bring it back. Ken Island High School has TSI dollars. It's a completely different grant. They're a targeted school for improvement. They brought their learning back immediately and decided to do a book, an initial book study of the book that explains student academic teams with their staff, with a plan then to use their dollars to bring the actual training, and it is a strategy, to their teachers in September for teachers to start practicing with next year during the '25, '26 school year. And then I think the plan, I looked over Dr. Rankin's implementation plan, simply because she shared it with me. She manages that grant. I manage Title II. For '26, '27, for it to be full implementation, in particular for their core content areas and all special education students. So that's kind of, that's not kind of. That's where it is and what Title II dollars are used for. If I could buy desks or fix things with Title II dollars, I absolutely would. The piece to Title II is that everything that we do with it has to be in support of educators who are working with kids. I can't buy things for kids or buy furniture, but I can buy materials to help teachers deliver their lessons. I just want to make sure I respond to everything, which I hope I did. Yes, I think I did. So in short, I can get back to the statement that you're looking at on that yellow form that was created, but we are looking to bring the PD to, the professional development, to our teachers from these three schools. Ken Island is going to capitalize on that date range, because we'll have two coaches from, i.e., here. The professional development in and of itself is less than $6,000. Where the heavy funding comes in is we're buying kits for all the teachers, so that the teachers have all the resources they need, the note cards, the placemats. They will get templates for how to make groups and how to monitor their groups. And then there's digital licenses that they can use to deepen, deepen the practice by monitoring student growth on that digital platform and interacting with other schools and districts who use this program, as well as getting tasks off of it for their particular contexts. So I think tonight, you've heard both sides of this, and as is life, and there are two sides to every story. You do have to vote on this. So I'll take any questions that you may have, so I can further clarify this for you before you vote.
The first one?
Go ahead.
The first one I have is, which is a red flag to me, was reading the Instructional Empowerment Sole Source Provider for Every Student Succeeds Act. At the very bottom, it says, Every Student Succeeds Act Tier Three, moderate evidence from at least one well-designed and well-implemented quasi-experimental study. And that Every Student Succeeds Act Tier Four, promising evidence from at least well-designed and well-implemented correlational study with statistical controls for selection bias. The words that stand out to me are moderate evidence, experimental study, promising evidence, and a correlational study. Who, this seems like, who would pick this as the best use of funds if this sounds like we're basically experimenting? We're the experiment.
So all that language is from the federal government. So there are four ratings when you are looking at a program with one being the highest, two being the second highest, three being, there is a study out there that said, we tried it. We had a control group and a group where we were using the strategy, and it worked. And then four means we are, we are looking to see if it works. A lot of what we do, a lot of PD, it comes in at a four. So even the dollars that we use, and for the teachers who aren't going to this, I do have funding in this for elementary teachers to attend a national conference from all the schools who aren't getting instructional empowerment. So, and I have to submit those ratings when I write the grant, and I think in Title Four, they do too. So, so when I see Tier Three, that's a pretty good rating when I'm asking for a strategy to be adopted.
So you're saying Tier Three, moderate evidence from at least one well-designed and one implemented quasi-experimental study? That definition for Tier Three is from the federal government?
Yes.
Exact words. So they didn't come up with that themselves?
No.
Okay. I have questions about the whole sole source.
Sure.
I'm sure we all do. Go ahead.
This is one of the weakest sole source things I've ever seen in my life. And I've done a lot with contracts in the government.
Sure.
Anybody can come up with a program and then name it whatever they want, and basically say, I'm the only one that does this, and they can't teach this anymore, because you can go put your patent, you can go put your, whatever you want on it. Your little stamp from the government says you're the only one does it. But that doesn't mean that nobody else is doing it. So when we're looking at doing this contract, why are they there, and why are we only getting a paper from this guy? Of course, I'm going to write something. If I'm trying to sell my business or product, I'm going to take and write something that makes it look like it's, you know, wine and cheese night and make it good for everybody.
You're exactly right. And I looked at, so I did, I did research on other consulting firms that do student academic teaming. The difference with instructional empowerment is that they have the resources for teachers to use packaged and ready-to-go, hard copy and digitally. And then the four others that I looked at, they didn't have the program packaged the way this one is.
But that still doesn't mean it's a sole source. You have four other programs that you just said that they were there. It might not have the entire amount of everything that this one offers, but that's still not a single source. They're not the only one that's doing this one type of education.
They're the only one that has the materials to support its implementation and usage.
So there are other businesses or programs that offer the same type of learning or teaching material?
It's not the same, because it doesn't have these huge resources that are imperative for its implementation.
So the only difference is these guys will provide the resources, and there'll be a cost compared to the other ones that give you the same material. They just don't give you the resources to implement.
They'll provide the resources, the coaching, and help us monitor it. Which I didn't find in the other.
So the other ones still have the same type of learning. They just don't give you the resources to implement it, though. But I'm just saying, it's still not the only program that's out there.
I E. doesn't own the term student-led academic teams. They're just the ones who studied it enough and did enough with it to make it the most accessible product on the market for the overwhelmed educator.
I have so many more questions, but I'll let you guys ask some more questions.
Some of the key things that stuck out to me was a lot of the emails and people that commented were teachers who are using it now or have used it in the past in other counties, and nobody had anything good to say to it. I went searching and looked and did some heavy research, and one of the things that came to mind was, you know, what else can the Title II A fiscal year 24 grants be used for? And you said that it's to do retention, training, and hiring. And I jotted this down, because this was some statements on his website and other statements that people who have read these books, taken these courses. So I just wrote it down, so I made sure I had everything here. So Mr. Toth is a self-described social justice warrior in power and educator who actively incorporates social justice principles into their teaching methods, aiming to empower students from marginalized backgrounds by providing them with the agency and knowledge to challenge the systemic inequalities and their full potential in the classroom, often through a curriculum that addresses diverse perspectives and/or experiences. How does that help our teachers in hiring, retention, and training?
It's training.
Training of social justice? That's what, that's, this is what his whole curriculum revolves around. I mean, have we, has a survey gone out to teachers to ask them, where do they think that these Title II funds would be best spent? Because they're the teachers. They're the one teaching it. The teachers know how to teach. Why are we now telling the teachers, guess what? We're going to learn how to teach a different way. We're reinventing the wheel again?
No, we're not. We're giving them a way to do something they're already doing even better and with more efficacy for kids.
They don't, they're not happy with it?
For every 13 statements you find bashing it, you're going to find 14 statements that would like to learn more or at least get the professional development.
I have not heard one person that has contacted us, spoke with, said anything good about it. Not one. Is there one person here?
We have administrators here that can say why they.
He's an administrator. I want somebody who has been using it. So that's really not helping.
They haven't had the training yet.
You've just said it's in Ken Island as a pilot program.
The book study is. They're learning about it. They haven't had the training to implement it.
Who approved, who approved this in Ken Island as a pilot study? Where, when was this approved? Was this approved by the board? Who approved this?
I don't know how TSI. We don't bring book studies to the board for individual improvement. Is this staff mandated to use it? No, it was voluntary.
Well, this leads me back to the next thing that several people made us aware of. The board had no idea that the superintendent and her staff were going to Orlando for training. You know, we were not aware. So we get a picture, and then, you know, people send us emails letting us know, hey, this is what these Title II funds were used for.
I don't believe this.
For staff training.
Which is under your purview.
Right, and there's locations all over the nation.
But the board was never even made aware that you and your team were going to Orlando.
It was professional development. We don't bring professional development.
You don't think it's appropriate to tell your board members that you're taking yourself and your team to Orlando? And then the board is left out in the open to, we were telling people, we don't know what you're talking about.
We send teachers and staff members consistently and constantly all through the year with all different kinds of funds for professional development. We do not bring them to the board.
The only question I had on that, you guys went, as administrators and yourself, okay, you guys went for, you know, better education. The people implementing this program are the teachers. Why weren't they the ones going?
Exactly.
And at the end of the day, I wasn't here yet. So I just look at it as, wouldn't that be a common courtesy, though, to send out that email to tell the board? I mean, that's just.
I'm just saying, we don't for any other, if that's a practice that the board would like.
The board doesn't know a lot what goes on, if you're hearing that. That's usually what happens. We find out cut rate by the teachers, the public.
Professional development in a school district is really for the day-to-day operations.
Hold on. Before we go too far, let's remember what it says in our handbook and as board members. We have one employee. We hire her. She runs the district.
And I expect her to keep the board.
There are things that she has purview to do. She doesn't need our.
She needs to keep the board aware. Where is her purview not to tell us what's going on? And then the board looks like a dumpster fire when we're asked by the public and we say, they didn't go to Orlando? What are you talking about? And then we get sent a picture, and now we all look like we have no idea what's going on.
Is she going to tell us every single thing that she does? I mean.
Going to Boston and to Chicago and, I mean, all over the nation.
Seriously, it's a question. Are you expecting?
Members.
I get that, but are you expecting the superintendent to inform you every single action that she takes?
No, but I would.
That's what you just asked for.
I would be expected as a board member to have the courtesy for the superintendent to tell us, hey, we have these funds. We are going to do this with it. Okay. That's all I'm asking for, some courtesy.
Especially 25 members going to Orlando.
All paid for.
I'm just, that's.
They didn't pay for it.
The grant paid for it.
Right.
Okay, so, let's move beyond the whole Orlando situation.
Yes. Everybody, I'm sure, has more questions.
So I have some questions. So we're talking close to $70,000 for this year. Okay. That's a lot of money. Is this an annual thing?
No, it's not. It's not.
So it's a one-time thing? And then you talk about they can get a digital license. What happens when you usually get a license? You gotta pay for it every year, right?
Typically, yes. This one will go, this one will go from, when are we going to do the PD? Will go from June to June with a minimal renewal fees.
So you're still paying more money in the future? So everything I've read on instructional empowerment, they say you get your initial cost. It is not even remotely close to that initial cost, because every year, there's more cost, there's more implementation, they add this, they add that. Everywhere you look and you've read on this, like you said, everybody can have bad reviews and good reviews. So many say that this is not the overall cost, that it adds up, and it gets over a million dollars by the time you try to implement every level that they have at all your different schools. It gets above and beyond the initial $60,000.
So they have six courses. We're looking, that goes 201, 301, 401. We're looking to hold steady at the 101 with just improving our student-led teams.
Okay, so you're going to pay the $70,000.
For three schools.
For three schools. That $70,000 plus the minimal digital license fee, do we know what that minimal fee is?
I don't.
So that would be a number that we should get, because that's going to then become on our annual costs that we're going to look at.
Well, it would be titled to the two costs if the funding's there.
And I would say too, like, in the first year, just for the full transparency, if it goes well at those three schools, we could potentially use the Title II, again after that, to expand it to other schools too, right?
Yes.
So.
If they're.
If, if we, if it's well received.
That's the shared decision.
Right. So I was at the budget roundtable earlier, what, December, when we went. One of the biggest items that everybody talked about was bringing back the help of the tutors and more teachers and such like that. So in these classrooms, I have the Maryland site brought up right now. It says Title II funds can be used for teacher salaries to reduce class size.
Okay, yeah.
Correct. So why would we take $70,000, which could pay for another body in the schools, but we're trying to implement a program that, to be 100% honest, isn't proven to help?
So we paid for two salaries when I first got here with Title II, which made my job real easy, because I just had to sign off on two teachers for the first two, three years I managed it. And then those salaries were subsequently moved to local by finance and members of the executive team under a different administration. To bring those back on, we would have to apply for it, because at that point, it would be supplanting, because we'd be moving it back from local to grant. The thing about the Title II that we get is that we don't get a lot. So 70 is a lot of money for an effective teacher, which I think is part of the language. I don't know if that would get their salary and all of their medical. And Title II is so unsteady in what we get, that why we might be able to pay for a. And Title II is so unsteady in what we get, that why we might be able to pay for a salary or two, we wouldn't be able to pay for any other professional development. Um, we wouldn't be able to send teachers to national conferences, um, to bring back learning for our contents, for C T E, uh, for art. So it would deplete us of staying in touch with national trends and practices. So you're absolutely right.
Could, could funds have been used for the teachers to go to Florida? For this, for the entire empowerment, training, instructional empowerment, in other words?
So what, instead of sending the administrators?
Yes, if this is ultimately where the place is gonna land, I would like to just address the elephant in the room. I feel like teachers are so spread thin right now, I feel like it's almost insulting to even think about imposing one more thing that they have to do. It's not, it has nothing to do with laziness. I'm seeing it, like boots on the ground every day, what teachers are doing and with a smile on their face for these kids, and then to ask them to learn something else to implement so that they can make their day even more harder or more difficult. And, and, one, the training, the, the Kent Island's already got the book. And then they already have a summit planned in June, to which they're getting a stipend for a hundred and fifteen dollars for training. Talk about putting the cart before the horse, this hasn't even been approved yet. So why are the teachers even wasting time learning something that's not required yet? They have to be, they, they're not required to learn it, I've been told, but they're gonna be graded on their annual review by using it. So like, I don't know, I would not wanna do it.
I didn't see that, and the, and again, the Kent Island is different.
Summit you're talking about?
What?
You, what summit you're talking about?
There's a summit in June, uh, Chesapeake College, correct? Isn't there something they have to attend in June?
Yeah, it's part of the contract.
I find it, I, I don't know why, but the fact that Michael Toth has been a name in Caroline County and this county since twenty sixteen, and yet he keeps resurfacing through this one company and this company, I just find it very, it just seems messy and not very transparent, and I just have, again, if it's not a sole source provider, aside from the materials that are provided, and there's no known data that it works, and everyone, it's like, if I bought a product on Amazon and every review is awful, I wouldn't buy it. So why are we even talking about the first crumb of seventy thousand dollars, knowing full well that it's going to need more? It's only gonna be good for the three schools that it's in, and it's just this reoccurring charge that you can't get out of. And so it's a waste of time and resources, knowing full well that there's no end in sight. And yet, I, like you said, we've been getting emails from people and not one has been positive. So like, to me as a consumer, I'm like, why would anybody wanna buy this right now? Except for the, for the administrators that went and had a great time at an all-expensive-paid trip that nobody knew about. It's, and I just feel as though, I just feel as if I was a teacher, I would be extremely frustrated. I would be extremely frustrated to know that this is something, another thing that we're going on, and we're at a point where we need more teachers. That seems to be the big consensus, is we need more teachers. And we're already talking about cutting more teachers next year, and there's more funding issues. I understand that the Title II funds can only be used for something, but I think it's a very appropriate idea to ask how and where they can be utilized by actually not insulting the teachers, but asking them, like collaborate with them instead of just looking at as a, uh, telling them what they need, actually asking them what they need. Um, that's just my opinion. I just think, I think that it's, it's not what the county needs right now, at all.
I, I have a question. What is this man's background? Because if you go look on his LinkedIn, you look on his website, you look everywhere, he has zero details on his background.
I don't know what school he went to?
It, it has nothing.
I don't know if he was an educator?
It's leadership instructional things, that's all stuff you can learn on a Google search. I learned leadership and teamwork through sports, military, my Marine Corps background. I can have zero background in education or anything and go put together a program, start a company. I'm not saying he did that, but it just seems weird that you can't find where he went to college, what university research laboratory he supposedly worked at and pulled all this information from and did all this stuff with his team. You can't find that anywhere. Whether, I know you've worked with him and you've traveled with him and spoke with him and presented this instruction with him out in San Diego.
Absolutely.
Right, so.
And I believe in it, and I will tell you that I believe in it.
That's fine.
And I think that.
But I'm saying, why, why does somebody hide their background?
Caroline County dropped it as soon as you were no longer the superintendent. I feel like that speaks volumes of the.
I don't think that's accurate, but.
That's what, I mean, I have news articles that said that it went, when the end of year.
I'd love to see that, but I don't think it's appropriate.
No, I'm just curious, like, wha, so what is this guy? Because anybody can go create these things.
Yeah, I think at this point, it's obvious that the board doesn't support this, so I don't know that we can continue to bash it. I think you ask if, you know, if they're not gonna entertain a vote, then.
Does anybody have a motion? Does anybody?
I'm not even gonna bother.
Right, so I mean.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we could sit here probably for three hours and discuss this, but I think that we do have an agenda and I think we should.
Can the board be presented with other options where this can be used? And maybe take, give, yeah, give the teachers a survey and hear what they, they think. Because they're the ones on the ground, they're the ones with the kids.
Twenty-four funds, I don't know that the timing is gonna be appropriate for us.
Oh, here we go again. This is another, we, this happens all the time.
But she said that when she sat down, these are funds for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Every single meeting with grant funds where you present it and then we're like, can we see other ideas? And we're like, oh, well, it has to be used within the next month, just like the tutor money.
Yeah, that's true.
So why isn't it presented to the board before, so we can discuss it?
These are, these are, uh, funds that, that are left over after all the initiatives that were approved and the C one twenty-five was already done and comes down and you do everything, and then you have funds that are left over. Because, as Bridget stated in the very beginning, this is because we didn't have as many, we didn't need as many coaches as we had originally planned. So then therefore, we had money left over, and so then you have to create a plan of how to use that money. And that has to be done in a very short timeframe because you're still on the same timeline. So you only have so long to spend it. So if you've made a plan, and then you utilize the plan, and then you have money left over, now you're at the end of your timeline, so then you have to.
That would be great if we were to see a plan on anything, budget, or how you guys do the title of stuff, like a, a plan of moving forward.
Title grant?
No, I want to know how we're gonna move forward as.
Not, not to be rude, but maybe a closed session might be a better time to be doing this because there are.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, this is a board conversation, and you weren't, right.
We can, I can get two copies of every single title grant.
I don't need copies, I just want to, they have, they take a break.
We are going to move on to the next session. Thank you, Ms. Bass.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Baraklo. Student classroom desk purchase.
Good evening, President Bent, Vice President Cates, Board Members, Executive Team, Dr. Salins. My name is Darryl Baraklo, I'm the Supervisor of Facilities and Design. I come before you this evening with actually two, uh, purchase requests. The first one is for student classroom desk furniture, uh, purchased for, uh, Bayside Elementary School. We are looking to purchase four hundred student desks to replace the existing desks, which are approximately twenty years plus old. Um, I reached out to our local Virco Classroom Furniture. Virco is a, uh, classroom manufacturer which, um, we have in the school system currently. They have a very good track record, have been in business for a very, very long time. Our local dealer, who, uh, we typically purchase through a, uh, intergovernmental purchasing agreement, uh, is Duron. Uh, reached out to them, received pricing from them. In addition to receiving pricing from them, I reached out to the, uh, Virco manufacturer and received names and telephone numbers for two national resellers and obtained pricing or, or sought pricing from them, received pricing from one and a second one or a third vendor declined to provide pricing. So with that said, Duron was the, uh, the lowest of three quotes at sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. So that's why I'm requesting, requesting approval to, uh, author a, uh, purchase order with them. Questions?
Question. Who's doing the, all the furniture for the new V O E building?
That has not been decided yet.
So if we were able to work with one of these companies and we're purchasing all that, do they do some kind of discounts if you're?
This is all through an inter, uh, uh, inter-government purchasing agreement, and they will not offer, uh, pricing. Uh, I, I did have questions with them on other items that were similar. Because this, uh, this purchase, and not, not speaking of the central office furniture, but this, uh, purchase involves several other schools, uh, like, like the, the next one that I'm gonna present. We have other, uh, pricing that fell below the, the, the threshold for board approval that we're authoring, uh, purchase orders on as well. And they're all not going to the same vendor because the pricing just worked out that way. But when, uh, questions came up about pricing, they won't budge on their pricing because what happens is, is that counties talk, and if I tell our next-door county or a county on the other side of, uh, of, of the water that I was able to buy a desk for six hundred dollars and it's normally seven hundred dollars, they're all gonna be going to him and saying, well, why'd you sell it to him for six hundred, not, not seven hundred? So it's all based on a cooperative purchasing agreement pricing with, with Duron.
Any other questions? Someone provide a motion? You can read the action, the recommended action.
Can I make a motion to purchase the four hundred student classroom desks to replace the existing desks? Budget source is local F Y twenty-five C I P funds.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is, um, student desk purchases, um, for, um, Queen Anne's County High School. We're looking at four hundred and seventy student desks, six hundred and forty student chairs to replace the desks and chairs which date back to the two thousand and two renovation and addition project. Again, similar to the previous one that I, uh, presented, I reached out to the Virco Classroom Furniture Dealer who sells to Queen Anne's County Public School and received a price of two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents. Uh, the, the two other vendors, uh, uh, who sell nationally, one declined to provide a price, and the second one provided a price of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-six cents. And, um, one thing that I do, uh, think it's very prudent to point out is the fact that, um, the national resellers' price are basically a drop ship, uh, price. So, they're gonna basically pull up at our school with a tractor trailer, and we're gonna have to get custodians or maintenance or whomever to unload, uh, all of the furniture, and then, uh, those same folks would be responsible for unboxing it, doing any assembly that might be required, moving the furniture into the classrooms, getting rid of all of the refuge and, and, and packaging material and all of that. And all of that is, is included in Duron's price. So I'm seeking approval for a purchase order for Duron.
Just what might help for the people at home and including for myself, because I'm new to all this. The funds for this can only be used for items such as this, correct?
It, they're, they're capital funds, so they can only be used for capital-type purchases, which furniture falls into that. I'm not, I, I guess my, my, I'm not sure where your question is going, but I can't, we couldn't take these funds and say, let's employ teachers with this.
I, I think just people at home, when they're hearing this, are gonna have questions on, could these funds be better spent somewhere else? Because of the things, and I just wanted to give you a chance to say to the layperson that this cannot go towards a teacher, this cannot go to, towards tutoring, just for educational purposes.
That's correct. It would have to go, it would have to go, uh, it would have to go towards a capital purchase, which would be.
And is there, what do you do with the existing furniture? Is there a way to auction it, to maybe recoup some of the funds to maybe offset the expense?
Yes, we have a public surplus. When we did the first phase at Queen Anne's County High School, um, we put it on there. Some things get bid on, um, and sent to maybe a third-world country or something like that. Uh, we put all of our buses on there, um, and then that money goes back into, you know, the board account. Some items that nobody's interested in, we end up taking, um, to the, uh, junkyard for metal. And then again, that money comes back into.
And that money gets recorded and accounted and parted.
Back into it. Now, you don't get the price of what you, and, and it all depends on what the items are. Sometimes when we have a copier, i- if it's a certain brand, we'll get, you know, a thousand dollars. If it's another kind of brand, there's not a whole lot of people that work on it, you might get ten dollars. But, we, like I said, we try to put it on public surplus, and in that way, that gives everybody a chance to bid on it, and you don't get this. Well, Johnny wanted to buy this, and he got to buy it, nobody else got a chance. Everybody goes on there, it's a public, and it's only for government, um, equipment. So any kind of government can join and put their equipment on there or surplus furniture on there. And I think one point to note, uh, Mr. Baraklo said, uh, when it was, um, renovated, a lot of this furniture is actually from when the school was originally built, back in nineteen sixty-six. So, a lot of the furniture there has, has seen its useful life.
So we approved, well, I didn't approve, I wasn't on the board, but, um, on September seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-two, there was a three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar contract approved for Duron for chairs and tables and desks.
I wasn't here then, I can only speak to what I'm thinking it might be, but it might have been, um, I, I do know that Queen Anne's, uh, County High School developed a furniture purchase, and they broke it down into three phases. And that may have been the first phase, and, and Mr. Pender can correct me if I'm.
I believe it was twenty-four classrooms.
Yeah, we were able to use Esser, Esser funds for that at the time, yeah.
Any other questions?
I did have a question on the, um, let me see if it'll pull back up here. So, there is a signature in the CFO line. We don't have a CFO, is that, who is the signature, is that?
It is yours.
It's Dr. Keppler's.
Okay.
It's yours. Dr. Keppler, it's yours. I'm assuming that it's yours.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion for approval?
Can I make a motion for the Queen Anne's County Board of Education to approve the purchase of four hundred and seventy student classroom desks and six hundred and fifty student chairs through the Duron Furniture Solutions for Queen Anne's County High School? Fiscal impact, two hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty and eighty cents, and the budget source is local F Y twenty-five C I P funds.
I second that.
Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
The next item is the review and revisions of the board handbook. Does everybody have a chance to look at it? There were a couple of questions and light items from members of the previous board. Did we review those and are we good with the updates?
Um, I went through the board handbook that, this editing version, which, um, is what we have now, is the current version, and they don't match. There was some changes that we never actually agreed upon them as a board. So I wrote down a couple of comments, like where they don't match the actual board we have now, a board handbook we have now.
Okay.
Um, and I know one of the ones, um, that we had talked about before, which had got changed, was providing all the board members with the Maryland Law Desk Book. Um, and I know the superintendent's comment was, it, just have one copy in her office, but I was provided one when I started.
You mean this one?
Yes.
There should be one on every desk.
They're very costly.
I was gonna say, there should be one on every desk.
There isn't.
This one has a name on it.
So the original one said that every board member will be provided with one, and then it was changed to, there was just one in the superintendent's office. I think it's helpful, I've looked up a lot of stuff in it, and I don't think a board member should have to drive to Centerville to look in the Maryland Law Desk Book. I mean, Rochelle had said to us there was a electronic copy that we could get, so.
Can we do that?
I don't know. She said you had to have a master, a master, a book. Uh, she said the master book, yeah, it came with a C D, so, but none of us, that was in no books we had, like, nobody had at the time. I don't know how we can get that, but.
Well, it's, it's like access to, or I don't have to come here.
That's weird. Is it a way?
You should be able to take the copy that's in your desk, if there's.
I don't have it, I don't have one at my desk, at least I, unless it's a tiny micro version.
No, it's like that big.
I feel like you'd be kind of big.
Check the year, because it, it's newer than you.
Is it?
They're, they're two, they're two hundred dollars a piece.
More than that.
That's two hundred dollars.
I think it was a hundred dollars to tell you that when Kerry ordered it for me.
Even digital access is fine, I'm sure that's at a significant cost reduction than a book. Yeah, I'm fine with having just access in general. But I would like to have access.
Okay.
Without having to go to.
Can we look at options for how we get digital copies, please?
Thank you.
All right, so, um, that's that, the legal book, but that doesn't address the handbook and the questions. We could probably bring that up during our working session and maybe walk through it together.
I just know this too, it's like the old.
Yeah. So can we add that to maybe next week? Our next meeting? Yeah, so that we can walk through it and talk through the items, especially the comments on the side. to make sure that we agree or disagree and make those changes together as a group. Okay.
Before you go off.
Um, does anybody feel we need a break, or you wanna keep going? All right, next up, eight oh one information session, Mr. John Gro, the climate survey results.
Good evening. Just give me a second, pull up this presentation.
Oh, you just pulled out.
Did I pull it out? All right, good evening, President Bent, Dr. Salons, executive team, members of the board. Uh, for the record, I am John Gro, I'm the supervisor of accountability. Tonight, I'm here to review two different surveys with you, the first one being the Queen Anne's Climate Survey that we send out each year, and then the second one will be the MD report card from the state that our students and our teachers take also. So I'll go over those results with you, and then in between, we'll take questions and we'll kind of explain where they go. Okay? So the first one, the climate survey, the purpose of this is to gather a pulse on the culture and climate throughout the district, ask employees about their work and leadership, and then about the communication throughout the district.
And this is not a state requirement.
This is, this is not, this is done just by us. This has been given the last, has it been three or four, is it like? This is our third year, third year in a row, and it has not changed, it's been the same throughout, so we're able to look at the data across all the schools. Methodology through this, it's administered within two weeks, it's open for two weeks in November. Two surveys are given, one to the central office and one to the school-based. Responses are anonymous. Employees respond to their bargaining unit and the level in which they worked, length of service that they work. This year, we had roughly a sixty-five percent response, which is about ten percent up from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Questions are on a five-point Likert scale, so it's the same thing, like you'll see a statement, and you'll answer strongly, disagree, all the way through strongly agree, with a neutral one in in the middle. And then they're categorized into four different topics, which is climate and culture, feelings and perception of employees' own work, leadership and communication. This is just a a quick overview of just the respondent profile, so we use Qualtrics, and you can really break down a lot of data with this. We had five hundred and ninety-one, and you can kind of just break it down into how many elementary, middle, high, and so forth, just so in case you want to see the whole, or if you want to go back and look in between each of those. In the first topic, which is climate and culture questions, these are the type of questions that that they'll answer about positive climate in the school, culture, respect among staff and students, belonging and and support, things along that nature. This right here remembers on that five-point Likert scale, so you want to definitely see it above that that three in the middle and to the agrees. So we're at a four point zero eight overall average on that one. And then it breaks it down throughout each of those different levels and throughout each each topic. The second one is employees' own work questions. So this goes through and talks about the mission and vision and goals of the district, responsibilities, expectations, getting feedback on their on teacher performance, having resources and and throughout their own classrooms. This one came out to a four point zero nine across all of them for for the average. When it goes into leadership, everyone is asked about school administrator support, clear expectations, district supervisors, and then also executive leadership support as well, along with those expectations. This one was a three point six nine, three point seven, and again, breaks that down. Communication questions, these are, this is about open communication, and then two-way communication between the school and then the the district level, and this one came out also to a three point six five. Next up, once we, once we have all these these averages and all these breakdowns of this data, this helps us inform of our work with within our strategic plan, superintendent roundtables, our school improvement committees. So in in each school, they have their school improvement teams, they can break this data down, and we can really see where we where we were, where we're going, and so forth. So we do that with it within the county, just so that we can get that, because the one that the state sends out is more of like a a whole state that we get back, and we want to know just right here in Queen Anne with our own types of questions. Any questions on that one?
Okay, keep going.
Okay, I'll roll. The second one, this one comes from the state, this is the Maryland School Survey. What is the school survey? This is in our accountability system, so the this kind of data gets rolled into our into our report card, so within each school and then the entire district. So this gets into some of those percentages that gives us those those ratings in our report cards. This is just another state definition of climate, which really goes into everything about school success. And then who takes this survey? So this is only given to students grades five through eleven. They take this survey, and then all instructional staff take this survey as well. Grades five through eight, they get fifty-three questions. High school, nine through eleven, they get fifty-four, and instructors, they get seventy-two questions. This is sort of the same way that we do ours, there's four different domains, it's safety, environment, engagement, and relationships. And they again go through strongly agree, agree, and so forth. This one is more on a, go to this next one, up to like a zero to a ten. So a lot of that is in those, you know, up greater than nine will be more favorable and so forth in those four different ways. So for example, and I have these from the from the last three years as well, the safety domain. So safety goes into physical safety, emotional safety, and you can see those scores right there. When they answer these questions, they all fit into that. So physical safety being how students feel safe at school, and it's not just themselves, but how they feel everyone in the school, the the safety of that. And that went from, you can see like a four to three to a five. So when I go through each one of those, you can kind of look at those scores on the side. And then emotional safety for the students, again, was around that five point eight, five three. And that's just how they feel, you know, whether they're accepted and they feel part of their school. And then in on the instructional side, you'll see the same thing. A lot of times on the instructional side, you'll see, you know, whether they think that, you know, those resources are there for for those students, especially within their emotional safety. Do they have, are 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 the students listened to, are they accepted, and so forth? And you can see those, what what those scores are right there. It's really interesting to, you know, when you're in a school, to really look at where the students are, where the staff are, and that's, again, really helpful when you're sitting down with your with your teams. There's more in the safety domain, they they go into bullying and substance abuse. So where bullying, where they feel, you know, our students teased and bullied and cyberbullied in school. And that was from a five, four, uh, three to a four. And then substance abuse, where they feel students thinks it thinks it's okay to use alcohol, drugs, or tobacco at school. And that you can see was a six to a seven. Bullying on the on the instructional side and substance abuse, again, that's, do we feel that we have these resources put in in into effect for our students? And you can see where those scores are as well. There's a community domain, and this goes into respect for diversity and participation and engagement. So whether students feel that they're being treated fairly, whether they're respected. Also, their participation being, do they have enough chances to participate in their their classes, extracurriculars, and so forth? And again, those scores are right there on the side for students and for instructional staff. In the environmental do- domain, there's behavior and academic supports, and then physical environment. Behavior and academic being the degree in which students feel that they receive all of that support, emotional, social, in in the school, and then instructional, whether we have those resources for those students. And both of those increased a bit over this past year. And then physical environment, whether they feel that their school is kept clean, comfortable, and in good repair. That went up from a two point seven to a three point two, and then teachers, same thing, from a five point nine to a six point four. In relationships, it asks questions about student-to-student relationships, and then also student-to-staff relationships. So you can see those scores there, how students rate themselves on that, and then how instructional staff also sees student-to-student and then student-to-staff. And that student-to-staff, you know, going going up, you know, in the seventh, but still increased there, and also on the instructional side. The last one is quality of instruction, of course, students won't get this one, but the instructional staff gets this, and this is based on adequate feedback from their school leadership to improve their teaching, and that's gone up each year from a five, six to a seven. So again, those those come in and gets calculated into a percent that fits in, again, more categories into the Maryland's report card, and that can be found on mdreportcard.org, and you can see all of those, there's tons of categories, if you'd like to go on there and check that out. But this is the part that came through with the Maryland School Survey. This will be taken again, probably the end of February, beginning of March, we'll we'll take this again. And that's all I have right there. Any questions at all?
I guess, so what is done about the areas that scored low? Like bullying, emotional safety, participation, and engagement, do we just take that into consideration?
I I mean, I think we just take this as as another data point, along with some of our others that we take to our teams, and when we look at some of the programs or what we're doing through our through our guidance department, or some of the other products that that we use with or or programs that we use, you know, what parts may be working? What what parts should we really stress on a little bit more? It's, and it and it could vary school to school, it could, you know.
Do we look at that? Do you have that broken down to see, you know, I guess, I just wonder, like.
Into the school, it does get broken down to schools and.
Okay, so it's just not on this?
They have their own, for sure, yes.
Okay.
Yes, and if you, on that site, you can go by the district, and you can go into each school and see everyone separately.
I think they do use that to help plan for their school improvement planning for the next year.
It's a lot of their data points in there, it is.
That needs to take place, so they get a complete, the same exact look, but it's just for your school. The principals use that information.
And all the students take it? I know the the teachers, I was just wondering why they only have a sixty-five percent? I guess because you.
Oh, no, all the students take this.
All the students take 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 this one, the, yes.
Sixty-five percent, which is actually statistically very significant for a survey.
Oh, for teachers, sixty-five percent teachers?
I mean, that's very significant for.
And you say, how was this implemented via like computer or paper, or how did they?
It's Qualtrics, it's electronic, it was sent, yes. They get an email basically and a link, and they go to that link and answer the questions. And, you know, not every district does surveys. It it is leaving yourself exposed and vulnerable, and, you know, but we want to know how we can make things better, and and it does reflect the culture and the climate of the school district. I think a lot of it does actually align with the state data, which is another data point for us.
We're able to expand a few of those questions into a couple of other areas.
Yeah. It's great to have more than one data point, you know.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Kibler.
I'm gonna go down there, because I have to flip through the slides.
Don't worry.
Thanks. Good evening, board members, President Bent, Dr. Salons, executive team, Dr. Matthew Kibler, Assistant Superintendent. I think I have a couple of agenda items here, the first one being our student enrollment report for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year. So this is basically a snapshot of literally the student enrollment in our in in each of our schools and the district as a whole. This is kind of a standard enrollment report that's been shared with the board for years, kind of tweaked it a little bit here and there with questions. I'm happy to take questions that you have and and bring things back any way you want to see it. I might go through some of the slides quickly, because it's the same information from one to the next, just looking at it in a little bit different way. Happy to, please stop me at any point if if there's something we want to talk and and look at. But really, the purpose is to provide an overview of student enrollment data as reported to MSD, the Maryland State Department of Education, based on nine thirty, two thousand and twenty-four. And for our new board members, why is nine thirty, two thousand and twenty-four important? Because that sets our stage for our school funding for the next fiscal year. So you'll hear, what's your September thirtieth account, what's your enrollment count? It's always going back to that September thirtieth, that's the, how many, how many students do we have in the seats at that time? And that that sets our funding. So that's why we're looking, and it will start to give us a little bit of an idea of where we might be the next year. One thing we added this year, because I know with some of our staffing changes, there's been a lot of discussion about class sizes, and so we included a slide on that in here, too, to kind of just jumpstart that conversation as we move into the the remainder of the year and budget planning and things. So first off, this is just our overall fall enrollment, so you can see we have about seventy-five hundred students. The light green portion are are pre-K students. The reason that the pre-K is called out separately is just because the way the funding is different for those students. The the, even though we count pre-K on September thirtieth, they're they're only in the funding like one bucket, where the the rest of the student body is applied everywhere. And so you really, I don't want to say it's more important, it's just, I guess, a different status for K to twelve students. So you can notice that for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're largely flat from last year, so seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-five students. I know that we talk a lot about pre-K, we're gonna talk about pre-K in the blueprint as well, and you might say, well, hey, I've heard about all this pre-K expansion. The community might be wondering why our numbers not really changing. The these pre-K numbers capture all the pre-K students, whether that's half-day or full-day. One thing we've done in our pre-K expansion in the past three years, taking the half-day programs to full-day, we're not necessarily increasing the total number of pre-K students we have, we're just changing those seats from half-day seats to full-day seats. So that's why I don't see a whole lot of difference in those.
And this is mostly for four-year-olds?
Mostly four-year-olds. There are some three-year-olds in the number for our blended learning for students with disabilities. And we, I don't want to give away everything in the blueprint that's coming up later, because that's good news, but we do have a three-year-old full-day class pilot at Mattabeek Elementary. And then we just kind of broke it out, just so you could see the the state aid. When you talk, you hear, you hear folks talk about what were your state aid numbers, how did your state aid numbers change? That's that K to twelve number, and that's that's what we have here. And then you see we did break it out, the preschool and the pre-K. Our designation, pre-kindergarten in our system, that's the four-year-old program, preschool is the three-year-old, and that's gonna be mostly our blended learning, this students with disabilities. Broken down by school and by grade. If it's okay with the board, the next few slides, I'll probably go through just quickly, we can hit any one you want. It's just, this is exactly what I was talking about, different ways to look at the, sort of the same information. You can look at how the the enrollment at each individual school is changing over the past five years. And then we have that broken down in in a bar chart as well, same data, just a different way to look at it. You can notice that most of our elementary schools, that is, that is where we're seeing a majority of the student enrollment increase. When you go to middle school, you'll see a little bit overall general decline. If you look at some of the Maryland Department of Planning, we're actually expected to have the biggest middle school growth proportionally to the end of the two thousand and twenties. Why is that? It's because right now, our middle school enrollment has dropped a little bit with the with the birth rate, but because the elementary has ticked up a little bit, eventually those kids are gonna go to middle school. So it's not because, if you look at any of that Department of Planning stuff, that we're expecting all kinds of new people to move to the county, it's just our students getting older. High school relatively flat, a little bit of a down year this year at Queen Anne's County, just one class. I'll look at the ethnicity makeup of our student body. Hispanic is the growing population. Also have provided historically home instruction data during this enrollment report. I, I was not here when that was originally put in here, but just to kind of continue the legacy of having it here, you can see our home instruction data. Obviously, the, the blue bar, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, that represents the COVID year, the COVID year. You see the drop after that. There's two ways for home instruction, families to, to, to deliver instruction and be monitored. We can, we can monitor, they can elect for us to monitor them, or they can be monitored by an umbrella organization that's registered with MSD. And that's just the breakdown. And that's the grade level distribution. I would, I, I would add, I maybe should have said at the beginning, there was a big drop during the COVID year. Obviously, it, it ties to the home instruction as well, and we've talked about it before with, with the board and with our county commissioners. Why, you know, the COVID happened and it looks like we had all these students leave the school system, why have they not come back? What we noticed is that, yes, there were some, the uptick in home instruction. But if you look at the birth rate in Queen Anne's County as well, in like the, I think it started in two thousand twelve through about like two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Really, the timing of when those, those, we had down years, basically. And that is timed with COVID. So it's kind of a perfect storm, where we did lose some students, admittedly, to private schools' home instruction. But it was also timed with lower birth rate in Queen Anne's County. Both of those situations kind of explained half of that three hundred student drop back in two thousand twenty, twenty.
And for the people at home, that really, that translates to funding per.
Correct.
Okay. And to give an idea how much that is when you look at the drop.
So we, so it, it's hard to do because a foundation amount for every stu-, that every student brings in is around eight to ten thousand dollars. I forget the actual number this year, but a rough estimate, if you take the average per student, is around fifteen thousand dollars. So if you do three hundred times fifteen.
I can't do the math fast, a five million-ish, something like.
Yes, four and a half.
He does numbers well. So what that says too, so what that says too is, we've got a number of new communities in our county. I'm in one. So they, we picked up, what, twenty, thirty new elementary school students in Churchill. But they happened after the September thirtieth date, so we don't get money for those because they weren't in the original count. The good news is the legislative committee, we talked about that a lot, and that's one of our agendas, to push for periods where we check and get updated numbers. Because you shouldn't be penalized that your county got a whole new set of students, but because they were after September thirtieth, you no longer get the money to pay for them.
Question, that, so when the September thirtieth happens and there's times during the year that there is a fluctuation or an increase in students? And how, how does that affect the timeline for funding? Like, in other words, is it just once a year you have a chance to put in your numbers and that's it?
Yep.
And there's no times during the year to reassess?
Not at all.
And are there known times of fluctuations each year that we can anticipate? Like, are there historically have been it, like?
There have been some.
Yeah, definitely. As we're moving in the second semester, typically in January, we'll get an influx. But also, I have to say that they likely won't do anything with it because if we have a student who's in Dorchester County on September thirtieth and not in Queen Anne's County, they got paid for that student, that student came, and now we don't get paid for it. They're not going to pay for that student again in the midst of another snapshot during the middle of the year. Now, maybe what they do is say, hey, you got it, Dorchester County's got to transfer money.
Yeah, can't they redirect the funds?
Redirect.
That would be nice.
It becomes very complicated, but, but I'm just saying, like, most of those kids are sitting somewhere in the state of Maryland and are moving. So the state of Maryland has paid for them, they just paid for them in a different school district. Now, I mean, we, we do have some Delaware that, that come over, but.
Military families.
Yeah.
We also have a lot of.
But we have a lot from like Kent County. Recently, we've had a lot of students come and enroll at Churchill Elementary School from Kent County. And, you know, they weren't with us on September thirtieth last year, they came after, we didn't get paid for them, so.
It's, it's really interesting, like, if we start hearing in the middle of September that we might have families moving to the area, guidance departments will work with those families, like, hey, get your student enrolled like as soon as possible. Just be, it, it really makes a difference.
Is possibly changing the legislature to support that? Is that something that is possible?
Why not?
I mean, I feel like it's.
We just gotta beat on our legislators.
It's like, I don't see why not. So I feel like if we can, we should.
We should. We're trying. We've talked about it a lot.
Good point.
But you gotta start somewhere. Like, I mean, it's. If it's consistently showing us at a loss, I feel like it's worth exploring.
But we might not be the only school district either, so we're probably not the only, it's probably happening all across the state or the US.
Not necessarily, like Frederick County is the largest growing county, they, and Wycomica County is probably the second-largest growing district. And, and so their funding source, you know, they're seeing greater increases to their foundational monies because of that.
Or even cha-, changing it where that, I don't see funding can change because I know that I, I'm not an accountant and how that works into numbers. But having some sort of halfway through the year, being able to resubmit the change, and then, I don't know how, but I'm just saying, I feel like it's worth a conversation of how, I don't know.
That'd be great, that'd be a legislative committee, sorry.
But I would like to say that, you know, we are a big farming county, and we have an influx of students during harvesting season. So around that time, help us out. Sorry.
Great conversation. Thank you. The next slide is a trend in our, in our class size. We have two slides here. I wanted to show it in two different ways. Class size by grade band. I, I try to be, so I am a statistician, try to be fully transparent. One of the reasons elementary has only captured K to five, because in full transparency, pre-K, we get our classrooms capped at twenty students. So I could skew the data here at the elementary level, but didn't think that's fair, so that's why we're looking K to five. You can see the change in the last three school years at, at the elementary level, the middle and the high school level. Kind of have two things going into what hap-, is happening here, and why is it a big, bigger jump at elementary? It's, it's not that we've only lost staff at the elementary level. If you look back at the previous slides, that's also where the, we've, we've gotten more students too. So it's kind of timed, timed well there. There's been staffing changes at every level, but that's why that one jumps out specifically. And I have that as well, if you want to look actually at the grade level on the next slide. High school doesn't really lend itself to look by grade, so I divided that one out by subject area.
Break down by the school too?
I could.
That's how, that's how we do our enrollment across the district as we look at it, by every single school.
Right.
When we're making staffing decisions, that's how we make staffing decisions, is we have a complete spreadsheet of every single.
It's, and, and I'll tell you, the, the, looking at it by school, it's, it's, it's really, it, it gets really challenging when you do that because you will, you will see a school that has, you know, maybe twenty-six kids in a class. But if it's a, if it's one of the smaller elementary schools, as soon as you add another classroom teacher there, then all of a sudden they go down to like fourteen or fifteen, whatever. We have it, happy to share it.
Because that's a question, because we all know how congested the western side of the county is compared to the eastern side. So when you look at the classrooms, we always hear about Kent Island or that, that side of the county having larger classrooms. And we hear the teachers speak about that, but then you go to the other side of the county, they, they might be smaller. So sometimes we think about that being kind of skewing the numbers, not saying that it's done purposely. But we would like to see what schools we may be able to change or fix or help bring those numbers back. Right now, that's pretty reasonable, but as we're saying, that can, that can change the numbers.
And that's, and that is.
Because the county is almost completely different on your side.
And that's literally what, what we do. Every single year, we look at the enrollment at every single school. And we will transfer a position to another school to reduce their class size. And it gets tricky because kindergarten, you have to do it really late, then you have some teachers that, you know, they're kind of getting set up for their room, and they may end up having to move them at the last minute. But, and, and also a point we're all taking that we do have some schools that have very, they're small schools. So taking away one teacher could increase class sizes dramatically or reduce, if you add one, reduce them, you know, to, to skew the data or to throw the data off. So, but we, we take a lot of time and effort into staffing and enrollment numbers to try to make it equitable across the district.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next topic.
Alright. Next, this next calendar?
Yes.
Did put everything in order. So tonight to talk about school calendar, what I, what I wanted to basically ask is just permission to continue how we've developed the school calendar in the past and move forward with that. So have a policy that says that we would create three school calendars to present to employees, community members and such, and then present to you all. So what we've used is our Citizens Advisory Council and our School System Improvement Committee to develop those three calendars. What has been, since our, our administration, we developed those three calendars. We would then present them in a survey to the community, that would be our families and our staff. And then we would bring the results of those surveys with the calendars to you all for a vote. And you could go with what the community says, you can obviously make any edits and, and things like that as well. But it has been kind, that's been the process. And basically, I'm seeking permission or approval or direction if that's not the process that you want to follow. I do have the three drafts of the calendars. I have them here in a copy that I can share. I would ask that I collect them back. And the reason for that, it, it's just so we don't get confusion in the community. When I, when I put the versions out in a survey, those will be out, they have draft written on it, but we all know how that happens. It still says twenty-five, twenty-six on the top, and I, and that's the only reason I haven't posted them yet, just till I got your, your all's direction. But with your permission, what I would do is I'd create a survey. I would include the three calendars, a little bit, a couple sentences about what distinguishes them from each other, and then bring that back for you. We did, we were delayed with snow. Last year, we were able to present it to you in February. Hopefully, I could get that out. But if, if we felt like we didn't get enough responses, we might have to delay it till the beginning of March. But happy to have your direction.
I think the survey has worked good thus far. Nobody can really complain that, you know, you didn't listen to them because everybody's getting a chance to say.
Yep.
And pick what they want.
And I'll talk more about it when we bring the survey back. But the committees work hard. We try to provide an option with the before Labor Day start and after Labor Day start, take into account spring break, no spring break, all of those things, so. Thank you.
Um, just a comment. There was a comment from Talbot County. Did I tell you about that?
I don't know.
They, the comment was, we have a lot of people that live there, work here. And there was a question on whether we could work together as two counties to put a more cohesive calendar together that benefits both. I told them how we do it. We did generate the three calendars, we put it out. And, I mean, if they work here, they're commenting on it anyway. But they wanted to see if there was a way to sync the two a little bit more, just so you live over there, but you work here, and you want to make sure that they sort of mash up. So if they've reached out, that's great. If they haven't, because I asked them to.
If you all direct me to do that, I can. I, I can say, I'm trying to make the seventy-five.
I think you're opening yourself up to.
I'm not saying that we reach out to them.
And everywhere else, so I think we just.
It was just a comment, so I just wanted to make sure it was out there.
Thank you.
Say that we put it out there. We'll keep going.
And I, I'll thank publicly the members of those two committees right now. I'll thank them again when we do the vote. I know it's hard work, it's a burden. A lot of people, I think they get excited about it, I think they can make, but we're, it's really regulated too. Like, there's only so much we can do with it. It's, it's kind of interesting. Thank you.
Okay. Blueprint AIB update.
Okay, so yeah, we have two blueprint agenda items. The first one, so we talked about doing like a blueprint sort of one-on-one for new board members and for the public as well, just a refresher. We do talk, talk about a lot, and we kind of always hit the pillars again. What I wanted to start with, because I think, Mr. Drager, you asked to see what the implementation plan was that was submitted. So the first topic right now, this is the full implementation plan that was approved by the AIB at their November twenty-first meeting, I believe it was, and all of the different pieces to this. We submitted the initial draft to the board back in May when it was submitted, and now here's the final approval. I don't want to, I don't want it to appear like I, I did this, this by myself. This is a huge undertaking across the district. I appreciate everybody that helps. You can see how much they changed it. If you look at the memo from the Accountability and Implementation Board, last year when we had to do a implementation plan, it was just the, the plan, just the document, which was already there to complete. But this year, they lumped all of these other pieces of blueprint implementation into full approval. And I am happy to report that, that we were approved. Not everybody was approved right away. And I think there's still a county or two that's waiting on approval.
Baltimore and there's one other that still haven't finished theirs.
But to me, I don't know if it's easy or not, but I convinced everything into one solid PDF that's associated with the, the memo. So I hope that's helpful, and I can answer any questions about it now or later that you might have.
So Ms. I said that they hold up funding until these plans are approved. How much funding are we talking about?
So they haven't done that yet to anybody. Baltimore County, or did you say of a city? I'm sorry, I forget now.
It's one of the two, like, always get them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the law changes initially in the first year where they could withhold funding, and please don't quote me, I can get you the exact. But they were able to withhold twenty-five percent of new funding over previous fiscal years. Eventually, that changes where if the state decides that you are not in compliance with the blueprint, they can withhold twenty-five percent of all funds. I'm, I'm not sure the fiscal year that that switch happens, and it's just a withhold, it doesn't mean you wouldn't get it back. But it, it's withheld, withheld until you're in compliance with the blueprint. So we don't want to be in that place, and I, I thank everybody for their help getting us here. You'll see, like, with the career ladder, maintenance of certification, that goes back to negotiations as well. So I don't know, those folks with our teachers' union appreciate their work to get us, I mean, they play a part as well.
Where are we at with the blueprint as far as the state being in a budget crisis and the governor saying we might need to pause it? Will that not come out till they get through legislative?
Yes, and that's sort of coming sort of this, this week, so we're kind of on, on hold. And if, if it's okay, when we go to the next piece and we go by pillar, I can share sort of when we get to the certain pillars where they were talking about it, if it's okay.
You guys all should have received the invite for the AIB meeting, and it's three hours long, but you'll hear it.
So is that going to discuss if, if they go into a pause, what that means? Is that what this is going to discuss? Because what's that going to do for us? When they go into a pause, does that mean the funding, that extra funding?
Sure.
So stops? So if we've already, my question is, if that extra funding kind of comes, goes down, and we've already implemented a bunch of the blueprint, and now we don't have the funding to continue implementing the blueprint, what does, what does that look like for us? Do we start eliminating the pre-K programs? Do we start eliminating some other things? Where do we go from there if we're now not getting that funding?
So if you, if you hear what the legislatures are, is saying right now, and the governor is saying, it's more of a pause. So as of right now, the discussion has not been about rolling back. So it, it's not saying that we're going to ask you to get rid of the pre-K four program. The discussion is, should we pause on expanding the pre-K three program? Should we pause on the teacher collaborative time where we have to have an eight-year cycle of getting to where our teachers are only teaching directly in front of the class sixty percent of the day? There is funding tied to that. I think it's around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty dollars per student. They're talking about eliminating, pausing that right now, which would be for next year. That wouldn't be taking away from what we're getting right now, it just would affect our increase. So as of right now, they're using the word pause, it's, it has not been eliminated. And I think part of it is because they know, we've all negotiated contracts getting our teachers' salaries up to sixty thousand dollars. How, how in the world would we ever be able to roll something like that back? The pre-K four program is doing wonders across the state. That would be devastating to roll that. program is doing wonders across the state. That would be devastating to roll that back. That doesn't mean it won't happen. That's just not what they're discussing right now that we've heard publicly. Anybody can correct me. I don't know, Ms. Ben or Dr. Salins.
The legislative committee is pushing on like pausing three-year-olds. Keep with the four-year-olds, but don't, let's wait on the expanding and mandatory that three-year-olds have all day pre-K.
Right.
Because there's no.
So the board members have a document that basically goes pillar by pillar and suggests what some proposed changes would be that we are supporting, um, as Queen Anne's County, that we are supporting as superintendents that I believe.
The legislative committee.
The legislative committee is supporting the made. And, uh, we didn't get there today. Um, but the, um, county commissioners would like to do a, a joint type of opportunity for the community to walk through these pillars, um, and talk about how they can advocate as community members for certain parts. So, you know, I want to help and advocate, but I don't know what to say. Some of our, that's some of our community members. So if we can give them language to say, hey, you know, let's keep our four-year-olds. We've done a great job. Let's celebrate the four-year-olds, but let's pause, as Dr. Kibler said, on expanding three-year-olds because we don't have the funding source in place yet to do that. Um, so those are some things that our community can advocate for us on our behalf. Um, and so we have a document prepared that we're sharing, shared with the commissioners , um, yesterday. The board members have it today and, um, and we'll talk collectively about how we can provide an opportunity for our community to really engage and interact and how can they advocate, um, to do good things with the blueprint. We don't want to throw the blueprint out. We don't want to advocate to say, hey, because we've done some great things. And Dr. Kibler's, if we, if we get to the next presentation, he's going to tell you some great things that we've done with it. Um, but how do we advocate to, you know, get the best out of, out of it as we can when our limited funding is in, you know, is a challenge that we face right now?
Did you say we got a letter? A letter today that you?
You're holding it.
Oh, gotcha. Sorry. Okay. Sorry. I'm like.
That's okay. That's it. Thank you.
So this, this is a great conversation and the, the next presentation just kind of organizes, organizes us pillar by pillar, gives a little bit of background again on the blueprint. I think I kind of start with these two slides every time in some form. When, when I talk about the blueprint in general, the blueprint does have five pillars. You see them in, on this slide, borrowed this slide with permission from another district that uses some community outreach. We have the early childhood education. That's pillar one. Recruiting high-quality teachers is pillar two. Um, college and career ready is pillar three. More resources for students is pillar four and governance and accountability is pillar five. So just again, a little bit of background, uh, where the blueprint came from and the governance of it. So it was brought about.
Commission.
We're blinking behind you. Sorry. There we go. So we, it was brought about by the Kerwin Commission, uh, from 2016 to 2019. Uh, recommendations turned into the blueprint for Maryland's future in 2020. Governor Hogan vetoed that during the next session. There were, uh, it was overridden and an additional bill that kind of supplemented it was also passed. The reason for the additional bill is because some of the dates had already started and they needed to kind of, uh, jumpstart, add some amendments in there. And that's what, what the second bill was, but that became the blueprint. Um, I did, um, for you all and for the public watching, uh, the governance of this, a new state agency was created, the Accountability and Implementation Board. They are basically over the blueprint for the entire state. So Maryland State Department of Education even has pieces that they report to the AIB for. Uh, so, um, that is for, and I, I just linked a couple of additional resources for you all or anybody that's watching as well. Uh, you can see the AIB's comprehensive implementation plan for which we are a part. They have an about blueprint section with some, um, other bullet points to read and just the AIB's website as well. Um, on the AIB's website, you can find our implementation plan as well as the implementation plan of everyone else across the state, not only the school districts, but all the agencies that play a part. The first pillar is early childhood. Uh, wanted to, when Dr. Salins and I talked about this in a good way to present to you all, we thought we would highlight some of the successes and challenges we're facing for each of the pillars. Uh, one of the biggest successes in the blueprint in general, I think, is our full, full day pre-K for tier one, four, four-year-olds in all elementary schools. So over the course of the past three years, we're in the third year of this plan, all of our elementary schools now have full day pre-K for four-year-olds, tier one. What does tier one mean? That is, uh, students that are within 300% of the poverty level, are multilingual students and are students, um, are special education students. They qualify as tier one students. We are, I can happily say, serving every tier one four-year-old in the district that wants a seat in pre-K. We went from a hundred seats for day to over 300 this year. That is a huge success for our district and something to be proud of. So really excited about that. Uh, another thing, our programs, the blueprint requirement, all of our pre-K, uh, programs are accredited. Um, actually let me step back. Centerville Elementary School is going through the accreditation process this year. Why are they not accredited yet? You can't get accreditation until you have a full day program. So we expanded to full day there this year. They'll be accredited at the end of the year, no doubt. Uh, another success this year, because as of right now, we have to operate under the assumption that we will have to start expanding to three-year-olds. We did pilot a pre-K program for three-year-olds at Mata Peak Elementary School. We have 10 three-year-olds in that classroom. It's going really well. The teacher, the assistant is doing wonderful. The school loves it. The families are happy and you should go check that classroom out at some point because it's awesome. So.
Blended program too.
It is a blended program.
And that's kids with IEPs and.
Yes. They're, and they're, and so yes, you have students who, um, do not have any special needs and students who have special needs.
Rowan was in, my youngest was in that at Canale, I think the first year after COVID. And it was, I mean, it was wonderful for her. Yeah. It was good for her and her peers.
Yes.
So this is the first step to turn all of our three-year-old classrooms if we keep going in that direction to that.
That's wonderful.
Uh, challenges that we face and kind of talk about them in general. Space to continue expansion. I mean, if you think about it, we're only serving the tier one students because that's what we have to. Unfortunately, that's what we get funded for. We don't get funded for the tier two and tier three students. If we had, if we were going to go truly universal, when sometimes with the blueprint, you hear that word, universal pre-K, it's really not that. That's not what the law is written for. Um, you're talking right now, like at Centerville Elementary School, we only have four pre-K classes. We would need eight to serve. If you think about the number of kindergarten classes they have, if you start extrapolating that at every school, space to serve universally would be a challenge. One of the downsides to the blueprint, when we go back to the funding, is they did not build in capital funding for us to expand our schools. What they expected to happen when you, with the expansion, was that private providers would want to jump on board and take, take part in this with us. And the blueprint had, sets a lofty expectation that 50% of our pre-K spots in the county would be taken by private providers. In Queen Anne's County, we have two providers, um, a, a company and a at-home daycare, providing a total of 14 slots. 10 at the, at the company. We're really excited. They're coming on this year. It's new. Four at the in-home daycare spot. We have over 300 seats of tier one students. We would need that many private providers. They are just not jumping on board across the state like Maryland started, like the Kerwin Commission thought. Why are they not doing it? It's a variety of reasons. One of it is the certification requirements for the staff, the accreditation requirements. They're hard. It's a lot. The pay they have to pay their employees is very difficult and childcare centers operate on very small margins. I'm not a private provider. Those are some of the challenges that we're hearing. And then to go back to Ms. Cape's question earlier with the, the, the funding piece, one of the pauses is potentially pausing expansion of three-year-olds. We haven't heard anymore, but that is something that all of the groups collectively are trying to push on the, on the state government.
And we're trying to shift the responsibility of those, building those private partnerships to MSDE.
Sure.
That's another, a big one.
Any questions on pillar one? Uh, pillar two, this is the high-quality, diverse teachers and leaders. So the successes, we successfully negotiated levels one to three of the career ladder with our teachers association this year. Uh, our starting salary will be up to the $60,000 for the licensed teachers, uh, but as of July 1, 2026, which is the intent of the law. We're also increasing the number of nationally board certified teachers, which is a piece of pillar two. Some of the challenges, um, are the, is the level four of the career ladder and some of the increased stipends that, um, are put in level four in the law. So level four establishes a teacher leadership track for, for our teachers as well as an administrative leadership track. In the teacher leadership track, there are stipends as, as teachers that are, it's basically written into the law of what we would have to provide. Um, that's, there's not a funding stream for that. There is a funding stream for the, um, nationally board certified, but it's not in the same way for those stipends. So that'll be, that'll add a cost to us. Um, just the funding in general for the increased number of NBC teachers, the state does kick in for us as our teachers become nationally board certified. Um, but as you all know, we only get about 40% of the funding, um, from the state. So the, the local jurisdiction has to pick up the other 60% of that. And then another just challenge in general is the decreased number overall of individuals going into the teaching leadership profession. And when we talk about, uh, some of the requirements of the blueprint, um, going back to a potential pause here is the 60-40 collaborative time, ensuring that teachers are only in front of the students actively teaching, like lecturing the class 60% of the time. Um, there is funding attached to that because it would mean we would need additional teachers. There's two issues with that. It is expensive, but also we'd have to hire more people. And as we know, that pipeline is not the same as it used to be. And that, that's if, the 60-40 thing, if, if they would cut that, that, that will hurt very bad.
Funding will be tremendous.
A hundred and sixty dollars. Again, I, I, I should have wrote the exact dollar figure down. I'm sorry I didn't, but, uh, times 7,500 students, that's a lot. Pillar three, this is, uh, the college and career readiness pathways. Uh, some of our successes are AP class enrollment, students taking AP classes, taking AP exams, accessing dual enrollment through either Washington College or a majority at Chesapeake College is, um, it's, it's doing great. It's really expanding. Um, we've talked a lot about, we've had other, uh, presentations about our career counseling program for, uh, sixth graders through 12th graders. That includes our career coaches at both high schools, which, uh, just have gotten great reviews. I'm sure you've heard about that. Um, we were able to have a very successful tutoring program using ESER funds that really helped our students. You know, from watching publicly the board meetings last year, hearing the, the commissioners' um, presentations, how important the tutors were to the school. That also includes our math and reading specialists. It was, it, a great service that unfortunately we're having to cut back on now because of, uh, budget, but have to highlight how good it was for previous years. We also had our comprehensive literacy plan approved. And there's another slide later about the comprehensive math plan and the comprehensive literacy plan is in the list, the full list of documents of approved. The challenges here really are just the funding and it's to be able to maintain, maintain and expand on the successes above. Just so the board under, uh, is aware, any student, once they become what is deemed CCR, college and career ready, that triggers funding for them and support for things that they would want to access. That would be the AP classes, the dual enrollment, the, the CTE programs. It means that if they take an AP, AP class, if they are CCR, they do not have to pay for the AP exam. That's a hundred dollars per class that they don't have to pay for. If they want to take dual enrollment, they can take up to two classes per semester. We get about, um, $600 per student for CCR, I believe it is. One dual enrollment class costs about $450 at Chesapeake College. So as soon as they take a second class, we're over budget for that student, we have to let them take four. It's a big expense. Uh, another challenge that we're going to have, and, and we're actively working on this, if you haven't met our, uh, CTE supervisor, Mr. Adam Tully. By 2031, 45% of our graduates need to complete an apprenticeship or earn an industry recognized credential. Um, we are actively working with all of our CTE programs. If they don't have a, uh, industry recognized credential, finding how we can make that happen, trying to work with the local, uh, community on finding apprenticeships. I actually was a speaker last week at the Queen Anne's County Economic Development, um, forum, and I was talking to business leaders. Some of them came up to me after I talked, talking about apprenticeships and how they can help us with the industry recognized credentials. So I'm confident we'll get on a path here to make that happen. We have to 2031, but that's a big struggle in the whole state. It's just different.
I have a quick question on that. So 45% of every student, or of all the students have to have apprenticeship or, or recognize. What if they don't want to?
That's, that's one of the challenges.
Student population, like what if they don't want to go down that path and they don't, we can't force them, right?
That's one of the challenges.
We don't get the money for it because the AIB will be paying attention and watching. And if we aren't meeting our numbers, we will get dinged for it.
So I think, I think the question for us as a district too, is making sure that we have programs that students are attracted to. It doesn't have to be welding, but there are industry recognized credentials in business, things like that. So it's making sure we have the attractive programs. And that's something that, uh, Mr. Tully is working really hard. Are there programs that we need to sunset to expand?
Right. We shouldn't be offering programs that they're not concluding with the certification.
But it's a great point. What if, would they just flat out say, I'm not going to do it?
Yeah. I, I think this is.
Forty-five percent's a lot.
It is.
I think this is one point where I, we feel like as a collective group that some of the markers in, um, the blueprint, uh, there was no data behind how the number was selected. So we feel that some of them are a little bit arbitrary, um, in nature. Um, they kind of just like with the providers, that was a perfect thing. They, they had just assumed that about 50% would, you know, be available. And they never really looked at rural communities to see. I mean, you might get, you might have those opportunities in Montgomery County to have daycare centers that are all certified all around you. But here on the shore, we just don't have that volume. But they kind of just blanket statement for the whole state of Maryland, just arbitrarily pick that without doing research. And so some of the markers in here, we feel like that's one where, did you do any research to see how many students are already going in or how many, have you surveyed students to see how many want to go in, those types of things? Um, it was just a number that was picked. That's the way we feel. So maybe that's a, a good point where, you know, this year, not necessarily because it's not part of our legislative, um, um, that we're advocating for changes, but maybe eventually next year or the following year, that would be something that we advocate to change that number and maybe get more in line with what reality would be.
Sure. One, one of the holdups is that, um, apprenticeship, that's, that's really strict in what qualifies in as an apprenticeship. So even just expanding that to be an, um, an internship or an externship, that would completely change the number of students that fall within into that 45%.
But we, I do know we were recognized last year because we had the most apprenticeships on the shore. And that was a, a great feeling considering we are not the largest county on the shore. So it's great. Kudos to, um, Mr. Tully for his leadership.
There has not been a lot of talk necessarily about places to pause in pillar three or pillar four. And I think kind of the biggest reason for that is these are the two that are directly supporting the students and the academic programs. So there hasn't been a lot of talk there, kind of in the opposite for pillar three and pillar four. We, you, as we get into more into budget season, we'll talk about the different buckets. There's a bucket right now called, um, transitional supplemental instruction. It's a category we get funding for. It's basically to support learning loss from COVID. We get, uh, small, it's not a small amount. We get money in regards to the entire budget it is, but we get, I think, uh, we get dollars for students in K to three. Um, that helps support our math and reading specialist positions we have. That program is supposed to sunset. I believe it's in FY '27. So this coming year, right now legislatively is the last year we would get that. That'll be a huge hit after, but that's, that is on the priority list. It kind of falls in pillar three and pillar four to expand it. I think on the sheet that Dr. Salins distributed, it's under pillar four. But that's, that's that category. Uh, otherwise pillar four, the, the big things to talk about our successes is we do have a community school this year at, um, Sellersdale Elementary School. They reached that community school status because of the large, um, number of students on free and reduced meals. The community school brought guaranteed funding into that school. We have a community school coordinator. It also, uh, helps pay for the, um, health. It also helps pay for the health professional there, which actually provided a relief. It's still local budget, but because of that additional dollars, it freed up some some additional local money for those positions. Multilingual student support, one thing we did in from the twenty four fiscal budget to fiscal year twenty five, when we talk about that Esser Cliff, we rolled some of our multilingual student support positions that were in the Esser dollars into the local budget to support the student population as a necessary for pillar four. And really, the challenge here is just ensuring that we get continued funding to support special education, our multilingual students and the social emotional well being of our students. Special education, it's well known across the state that districts are paying millions of dollars more than what we are actually allotted in special education. And the state needs to recognize that and do their part to increase the money that we have there. And then lastly, the pillar five, this is the governance and accountability. So, this is just the oversight of the blueprint. Again, our big success this year is just that we have our implementation plan approved and all the pieces that go with it and just celebrating the success of the teamwork and collaboration that went into that. Some of the challenges we we deal with are the communication and guidance from the Maryland State Department of Education and the Accountability and Implementation Board. I can tell you what does that mean? Well, as of right now, we are supposed to have by July first, twenty twenty five, level four of the career ladder complete. There's talk about pausing or changing what that means. We're sitting here on what, January fifteenth? And and we don't know what that means that we have to do. But anything we do for level four that involves contract negotiations and and we're all kind of, we just don't get that. We don't get communicated and directives timely enough to really be able to do the things we need to do to do them well all the time. The other big challenge here you'll hear about are the new fiscal reporting requirements. And what the blueprint suggests is that we need to start tracking every dollar that every student brings into the district, back to the school level and how those dollars that the students bring in follows them at the school. So, you have your different buckets and we can talk more about that with budget. But every every student, they bring in certain amount of funding to this to this system. And we're supposed to, we we have to be able to show how we're using those dollars specifically for those buckets. One of the things that's on the legislative priority is requesting that we can do that in the aggregate. So, rather than if a student brings in ten thousand in one bucket, five thousand for another, where we have to show that split at the school level, we can just show, well, if they brought in fifteen thousand dollars, we're spending that fifteen thousand dollars at that school. This is a huge, you talk about financial issues in the state, the reporting requirements. You know, the state turned over six chief financial officers next year. This is directly a reason for that. It's just the reporting requirements and the burden that's on the financial departments, it's huge. It's not an easy undertaking. There's all kinds of blueprint dates throughout the year. This is, these are kind of the two biggest ones for this year. So, we did have the pre K to twelve comprehensive literacy plan. Last year, the comprehensive math plan is due this June. And then as of July first, we would have to have our full career ladder plan, which is level four of the career ladder. But again, we're kind of waiting in the coming weeks to see what that that might mean. And obviously, I'll keep you guys abreast of what's going on for that. Always do updates like this. I'm always at the end, so everybody's tired, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'll do a dance next time.
Okay.
Bring our one award winner back for that.
Yeah.
No, thank you very much. Legislative audit.
The board members put that on there, so whatever question they have. I think we addressed it.
Close session.
Because it was based on contracts which were individualized and would fall under our HR personnel report. Okay.
What about, can we discuss the audit from Monday or would that be?
That's an Adam question.
That, I don't think it's it's not done. Yeah, so we could discuss the performance audit from Monday.
Only come out yet. Only only two.
Hasn't come out yet.
It hasn't come out yet. So, there was a there was a briefing, well, there was a briefing on Monday to brief out part of it. But the team that that the audit are not finished, they have to finish their actual filing report and then send it out.
More time.
Right.
Our team will meet with them one more time and then it'll come out. I do anticipate it should be out after we meet with them. Hopefully, I think we're gonna meet with them. If our if the stars align, it would be next week. If not early the following week, we would have worked with them. And then I would assume that they would need another week or two to finalize. So, I'm hopeful in the next four weeks.
Are we gonna go over as a board, what you guys went over on Monday? You guys were in the meeting Monday.
Yeah, we sat and listened to what they brought it and you got a copy of.
Right, I got a copy of it, but I mean, I can read it, but what they said, I wasn't sure if you're gonna kind of brief us on it.
They basically went through.
Just went through the slide passage and and they were like, it's not completely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, my question is, this legislative audit, what is the plan forward? What are we gonna do about all these things in here that we were dinged? Because it's pretty embarrassing.
Well, you know, I I hear your comment about it's pretty embarrassing and I guess I would challenge that. You know, we are a business. The legislative auditors come in, they are not K twelve people. Some of their recommendations don't even align with the laws. And so, we have to be careful about just making a very blanket statement. Some of them, some of the recommendations are valid recommendations and we certainly take those. We actually create a document within the reporting that says we what we're gonna do. Every single one of theirs, we respond to it and tell them how we're going to remedy that situation. But but some of them and and I I kind of would defer to Adam. He's worked with a lot of legislative audits before and in Europe, I would love your opinion on on your thoughts about.
We can talk about specific ones, you know, if there's a specific issue.
I mean, just, you know, going off the the letter that is in the foreword before, you know, they address the first page where Senator Clarence K. Lamb, where they just kind of point out and highlight some of the issues that they found in there. You know, with Queen Anne's County needing to improve internal controls, accountability, payroll processing, POs. I mean, we're in a budget crisis and this kind of points out why we are where we are at now. And moving forward, we need some kind of plan to get back on track, get a fund balance, be able to afford to pay things, have some sort of accountability when it comes to, you know, POs and people being paid and ordering things. And it just, I mean, there's a there's a lot of stuff in here to unpack and.
Yes.
We responded to all of them and it's in there. I mean, we're happy to, you know, I've we've shared the report. If there are very specific things, we're happy to to share that. But but we have responded. We we go through hours of meeting with them and they present us with their, you know, what their findings are. And we present to them how we're going to remedy those findings. And so, I I do feel like there's a standard plan of action in there and, you know, the team's gonna have to follow through with.
I mean, some of these things were dated back to two thousand and six. That was almost twenty years ago. Like, why are things getting repeated over and over again and somebody isn't picking up on, hey, let's fix this. This has been a problem for a long time.
I would I would focus, you know, the the introductory letter has contained some broad generalized statements. I would focus on the underneath the the general letter. If you go into each specific item, I think those are more accurate description of what the findings and recommendations are. Like, for instance, a couple of the, you know, the personnel related descriptions in the letter, I think, are a little overly broad. Don't exactly capture some of the nuance in the law. But then if you go down to the recommendations, and those are a little bit more detailed within the sixty five pages of this. But if you go into each section, it's a little bit more detailed.
I have a question for you, Dr. Salin. You said you've went back and had discussions with the legislative auditor.
We have to by law. We sit down and have.
And then you've sent, you sent them recommendations or you sent?
It's in part of their, it's part of the process. So, they send, they sit down with us and say, here's our finding one, here's the documentation we have. Do you have additional information that we need to consider for this matter? And what is, this is our recommendation, do you accept our recommendation to move forward with that? So, we have to say, yes, we accept that recommendation and we will implement a new policy as it relates to POs. And so, we have to, we've been through that process with the legislative auditor team.
Can we see them?
That was gonna be the next question.
Yeah, can we see the what you've guys submitted back to them?
It's in here.
Yeah. Well, can we get like a report? Is that what you're asking for? A report of proceeding going forward, not?
I guess like the plan.
Right. So, it says we recommend that Queen, you know, I'm just picking one random, incorporate a statutory requirement, blah, blah, blah. So, we have to, when we go through the process, we have to either accept that recommendation or we have to say, no, we don't, we don't accept that recommendation because we don't believe that you're assessing the situation accurately. So, if you see the recommendation in there, then that means we've accepted that recommendation and that we are putting in place something to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And, you know, this is an audit that goes every six years. And, you know, that's that's challenging when you have changes within your organization. So, a lot of times, we do a hundred and seventy nine reports every year just for MSD. And then you couple that with the five audits that we've finished in the last five months, something like this. When you have multiple years and then you have a super new superintendent or a new CFO or a new COO, I can see where something might be repeated because it might fall off the plate. And then, as I said, some of these things, especially as it relates to transportation, a lot of their findings don't necessarily align with K twelve and how we have to do things as it relates to paying people and and going by the, help me out, so the CP.
But you had the PVA, the per vehicle allotment for buses. You'll find that in every school system cited for many, many, many years. And I've yet to come across a formula in any school system that's turned one into meet what they their requirements are.
Yeah, I think the broad stroke you would see that that our report doesn't look vastly different than any other K twelve system audit for the legislators. But as I said, as they put recommendations in, we do have the right to say, no, we we don't agree with that recommendation and we're not, you know, and they reflect that in here and that actually goes to to the legislation and they'll see that. But if you see that the recommendation is in here, it's because we've said, yes, we agree that we need to open that or put in a provision or add, you know, stipulation or add a policy or procedure and those types of things.
I have a question. In regards to the required screening screening before hiring certain applicants for positions involving direct contacts with minors, just obviously for myself and for the parents at home, just for concerns in general, in what areas of the school would those oversights have taken place? Just trying to understand where they happen in terms of the proximity of children.
So, that's HR. I'm gonna let, because Michael's the one who was in the meetings with us and and actually defended that that point, so.
Yeah, everybody that has contact with children gets background checked, criminal background checked, federal and state, as well as a drug test. We are one of the very few counties in the state that still drug test employees. Some of their findings, they 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 asked for a core sample of employees. Some of the employees that they asked for, and I I was, I don't want to say I was contentious with them, but I was rather adamant that several of these employees were employed with us prior to two thousand nineteen when this law took place. So, they don't have background checks. We're not going to take everyone that has worked for us and then do a background check. But since nineteen, anyone that has come on board with us, and I didn't start until twenty one, I can I can assure you since I've been here because I've had the rodeo. You do your your background checks because you certainly don't want to not do one and then have something happen. And then you get asked the question, you know, was there a background check? And absolutely there was, and here it is, here's the CGIS report.
This is because this is a six year, this happened previous.
Yes.
So, wouldn't there have been a background check pre twenty nineteen? So, it's just what is?
There's some employees that have been here for twenty, thirty years.
Right.
They didn't do background checks back then.
I think that's kind of a problem then if we have, just because somebody's worked here for twenty or thirty years, they should have a background check. What if they have something in their background that you don't know about? That's concerning as a parent and a taxpayer and somebody listening, just, I mean, just because somebody's been in the school for twenty or thirty years doesn't mean they're not a predator. We see it all the time, even with people who have background checks, so.
To date, everyone's had a background check.
Absolutely.
The recommendation is, isn't there about the background checks? The background checks do, it's the HB four eighty six screening. That's what it is. So, I think there might be some miscommunication about the, it might be mislabeling it. The rec, the finding was about the HB four eighty six screening, not the background.
And that was what, that was the twenty.
Right, that was the new law that you referenced.
But everyone has had the background check. It's the HB four eighty six.
That's so, there's a difference.
But we have a background check on them. It's if it's if anyone has worked in another jurisdiction or another position in which they have worked around children, we send it to a previous employer. But if they've already been employed by us, we've already done a background check, we don't have to do that.
Well, it kind of made it sound the way you worded it that they've been here for thirty.
It's the HB four eighty six screening, which is a relatively new requirement that is in addition to a background.
Okay.
That's what they're, am I right?
Yes. Yeah, rest assured, people have background checks because we have, we have candidates that would like to work here that do not work here because of the background checks. And I'll just leave it at that.
Any other questions? Procurement policy discussion.
That was also the board.
Yes, it was.
This is a school bus?
I think it was a, huh?
School bus camera? That you said?
No, I think it.
No, I brought up the procurement process, reading through some of the legislative and and some of the audit and some of the findings. We have a threshold for purchases without board approval at fifty thousand dollars. And looking at the ledger or the audit and actually looking at some of our policies from goods and services. I know it's slightly different all, but previously it was lower.
It was, it was twenty five thousand.
Yes. When did that get bumped to fifty thousand and why was that?
I saw that.
It got bumped to fifty thousand two years ago. And it was done because, let's take facilities as an example. There are parts and pieces that come in and you would have multiple requests at the twenty five thousand dollar level. If it's a something that you take different parts of the invoice, you put it all together, they're fifty thousand dollars or less, do we need to bring every single item, every single piece to the board? The board at that time felt no, and so they bumped it up to fifty.
And it, and also because the county is not at twenty five thousand, the county is.
Right, the county was at fifty.
The two documents say two different things. One says twenty five.
Policy wasn't updated and that was a result of having multiple CFOs and selecting the county. So, it was twenty five.
So, the board did do research, they worked with the county and the county has a limit of fifty thousand dollars. And so, they moved the superintendent's approval at fifty thousand dollars to match.
Who at the county?
Queen Anne's, what we do in the county.
So, who, the county has a superintendent at fifty thousand or the who with?
The county commissioners have their policy for when they go and approve for what's brought in front of them. It might even be higher now, but I believe at the time we looked at it, I believe it was fifty. And I believe if I remember, that's why the board went to do the same as the county. Do you recall?
State law back in, I want to say twenty three, raised theirs up to a hundred thousand dollars. And then at that time, you know, the board felt that we're constantly bringing things in front of them at like, you know, twenty six thousand dollars. They moved it up to fifty thousand dollars. I can only speak for like the areas that I ever see. But for a compressor or pump that goes up, that's twenty six thousand dollars and I'm waiting for a month to get that put in where we don't have air conditioning or heat, like severely limits what I what I can do. And again, I can only speak for the areas that I ever see. So, they they moved it up, I don't know, I guess it was about three, two or three years ago.
It's a couple of years ago.
To to fifty thousand dollars. But as you stated, if you look in the regulations, those numbers where like you have to get, you don't need any bids. Then you need three verbal, then you need three written with those amounts in there. That needs to be changed to accommodate where the threshold is right now.
Right, yeah, I was just, I was reading over that and I was, it 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 does contradict itself.
Oh, it does.
It does.
And that that goes back to my getting organized again that I spoke about last meeting, getting everything that we have. I know we're busy, I know folks are busy, but the organization and updating our policy procedures, putting all our contracts, everything in one spot, we are far behind. putting all our contracts, everything in one spot, we are far behind in that as a district. And I know it's a lot of work, but that, that needs to start getting done because here's a perfect example of walking into this scenario. In doing so, when we're making these purchases, I'm assuming they're coming from yourself or yourself agreeing to, when you say verbal, is that still the verbal quote compared to a written quote for the products? Is that still a, a procedure you're doing now?
If you, if you look at the, and again, I'm just speaking for my area, but if you're looking at the regulations three-ten dash one, those should be in there adjusted to the fifty thousand. So if you're looking at D, that should be fifty thousand. If you go up to A, that should be any goods per unit value of twenty thousand dollars or less. B should be really twenty to thirty thousand dollars. And then C should be, what's it, thirty to fifty thousand dollars to align with those.
So should we not be getting written quotes instead of just verbal ones for record-keeping purposes?
Wasn't that an issue in the audit was there weren't POs for a lot of purchases?
I'm just, this isn't mine. I'm, I'm just.
No, I'm just, no, I'm, I, that was a question. I'm not, I'm not saying.
Speaking in my area, yeah, I mean.
Correct.
We asked for three written quotes. Sometimes you won't receive one from somebody. They'd be like, hey, I don't, I don't have time for this or I'm too busy. But we.
And they're too busy to get our business at that point, right?
Oh, yeah, but sometimes, you know, you don't.
Not of an air compressor.
But, uh.
Well, then we can set in there an emergency. I mean, if the boiler goes out, then you should be able to purchase something.
And if you go through that reading, that you are correct. There are different times where you can do that.
So I want to go back to the comment about POs because, you know, there was a comment in there about POs and the legislative auditors believe that every single thing we do should have a PO behind it. And we don't agree with that, I'll be honest with you. There are some things that we consider that are non POs, so.
But we're using taxpayer dollars. Why would we not track everything?
Some of those are predictable. So like our electric bill, we shouldn't have to put a PO in every single month to pay our electric bill.
Wouldn't there be something that shows this is what it costs and this is what we paid?
Right.
We do have that.
Okay.
But we don't have a PO. We don't put a PO and have it come to you guys and say, hey, our electric bill for this month was a hundred thousand dollars. We need your approval so we can pay it. Some of those are considered non POs. So can you help me give another example of what a non PO would be?
I get, I understand the electric bill. That's a monthly bill. Like, that makes sense.
I'm saying the legislative auditors, they found that as a finding that every single thing should be a PO. And we don't necessarily agree with that because we're a public institution. And if we have to have something that's an emergency, we should be able to look at the best interest of the students and get heat on in that building and not say, we have to mandate by law, put a PO, so we're just gonna have to wait. I'm sorry that we don't have heat in that building.
Purchase order. You have, within the right to purchase something, you can buy it, but there should still be a.
Not utilities or.
No, but there should be an order for, there should be an order, purchase order for tracking expenditures.
That's how your CFO does their job.
I'm not saying electric bill, but if there's like an emergency, you need to buy a new boiler, you can buy it, but there should still be a quote with a purchase order. Correct.
We do that, yes.
So that's what we're saying. Everything like that needs to have a purchase order, but there's, hasn't been everything.
I think what she's trying to say is, they said everything.
Every single thing.
Every single thing we pay for.
Which, which are the commissioners or the state?
The legislative audit.
You'll see that in the finding that they said that we, not everything has a PO, that, that's why. So there is, what I'm just trying to suggest is there is a little bit of history behind their perceptions on things that don't necessarily align to public education.
Some of the other items they were talking about, like water, sewer, telephone.
Yeah, telephone bill, that was another one.
These all seem like they're falling into like utilities.
Right, like, and you can.
Well, those were the areas, if you go through and look back part of it, were, that were cited, but like, where's your PO with that? And then the question comes, okay, do we constantly go back and change the PO for? I'm just making this up. It, it's not uncommon for a high school to use twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars worth of electric a month.
But could we specify utilities and like purchase goods or things?
Legislative audit doesn't, doesn't distinguish that. That would be great if they did.
Or step outside of, stepping outside of the legislative audit.
Terms of moving forward for better efficiency.
For better bookkeeping and better efficiency and tracking our expenditures because we're in a budget crisis. So to fix our budget crisis, if we get on track with actually going through with the purchase orders. I understand utilities is something separate.
Right, but so we do, we do purchase orders for everything except for things that are like utilities, phone bills and things like that, that aren't going to be exactly the same amount of money each time. So the electric bill at Pin Island High School might be twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty.
It's just like our normal house. We understand that aspect.
Right, so we're not gonna, so that's all we're saying. We do a purchase order for everything else.
So on top of this, so at the board meeting then, it wouldn't be an issue to bring up and show a report for all expenditures for that month then, right?
We do have that. We can offer that to you at any time.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
And then on top, on top of that, that we, yeah, that's, I'm asking those things because we haven't seen them yet. So if we have, right, right. But that's why I'm asking. It's just a question.
And I haven't seen them.
It's just an ask, I'm asking these questions because we're.
Yeah, but they're not detailed, like what he's saying. We see a line item. Like, there's no detail.
I'm just trying to look at these line items. I want to go see, like, we're coming to the budget. Hence why I raised my hand to be on the budget committee. Because I want to go and see these line items and see where we're at. Because we, we're cutting valuable assets. When if we can go back, assets such as teachers and tutors and, and other things like that, which I'm well aware, you're, you're a smart individual, you understand what's going on. But is there other ways that we can look at some of these purchases or there's money being spent? I'm not saying maliciously, but spent when it shouldn't be spent in other areas, where we can start being smarter with our money? You know, being with the government for over twenty years in the federal government, there's so much wasted money in the government, I'm saying the school district, but government period, that we should be able to look line by line and see where the contracts are, where, okay, cool. We've been with these guys for twenty years, so we just keep renewing the contract. Maybe they aren't the best people to use anymore. Like, where are we spending the money? Let's see these purchase orders. Let's get on track, organized on every purchase order so that maybe we can actually start getting back this budget. And at the end of the day, we can start getting back on roll where we're helping bring back staff that is needed.
So getting back to procurement, on like, on an agenda item, like the desk purchase, how can we as a board be assured that it went through the correct RFP process? So I, I think that would be helpful, just, you know, like, when something's put in front of us, because it's not our job to go through everything and look at it, but just to know that it was bid out at a high level. I, I guess that's.
Normally, we attach the.
Yellow sheet.
If, if you, if you want there, we can attach the contracts, the three contracts or the four contracts.
That would be amazing.
On there, I mean.
Just so you could see them.
We have that in our, you know, in our paperwork and all that stuff. I mean, that's.
Yeah, I'm sure they had that. That wasn't, that wasn't a question of mine. I'm, I'm.
I mean, it's, yeah. On, on our side of it, it's making sure that like we're comparing apples to apples when we're ordering, something like, you know, you might have.
I think you did attach it for the desks. It said like six hundred fifty-three for two hundred. I mean, I saw that, like, that, that was attached to the one.
So does that count as three and that covers us then, even though somebody declines to quote?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so what I can offer is if, if we're talking about a larger.
Mr. Bearclough, can you come up to the audience watching at home? I'm sorry. I apologize for not being.
So if, if we have, like, let's, let's take the bidding of the central office project. When I do that presentation, typically I will, will provide a narrative of when it was put on the street, how it was advertised, the number of bidders. We did a pre-bid conference. I'll put that in the narrative. With the furniture, it, it, it's not necessarily that same process because it's, it's a, it's a much more defined scope. And we're, like I had mentioned, we're using the inter, inter-agency cooperative purchasing agreement from one vendor. By, by policy and law, I could have just accepted that one number because it was through an inter-agency cooperative purchasing agreement. But what I was trying to do to, to kind of demonstrate a little bit of good stewardship with, with the financial aspect of things, I went ahead and, and reached out to other vendors to demonstrate that the, the ICPA was the best price when you, when you start looking at other vendors who could offer the same product.
And what about in, they identified in here, which I've asked repeatedly over the past two years, the piggybacking of contracts? So I understand we can piggyback off of someone else's contract, but as a board member, I look at that and I don't know that they did their due diligence. I hope they did and they took, you know, the best bid they got, but we don't see any of that information. So sometimes it's hard to be like, yeah, let's approve a seven hundred thousand dollar contract because we're piggybacking. So is there a way that we can see what the other states, other school districts, like what bids they took in to?
Actually, what we would do, i- i- if it's desired, we can actually provide a copy of whatever that ICPA, whatever that agreement is in there. And, and they will go through and they will demonstrate, you know, for example, Garland Roof, they, they're operating on an omnia contract, which is, which is a, a, a United statewide contract. They have a, a large contract that we can, we can insert as, as part of the yellow sheet if, if that's what.
So we could see that, hey, this other, these are the bids that this other place took, okay.
Absolutely. It's, it's not going to be very well-defined as far as what the results are going to be because then you're talking about getting, you know, it would probably be a REMA paper because you're talking about a nationwide omnia contract. But if, if I could provide the, the actual contract part of it.
And maybe somebody could just give me some clarification. In the legislative report, it says that our analysis of certain invoices, invoice payments over ten thousand dollars during the period from July twenty nineteen to May twenty twenty-three disclosed that payments to hundred vendors totaling approximately a hundred million dollars did not have established purchase orders. Is that, from what you were saying, is that all utilities?
Not, I mean, utilities, phone bills, yes, all the types of things that would typically fall mostly in SEDEX.
Because they put food services and healthcare vendor.
Well, food services, we, I don't, food services is not accurate because we, that was a, that's a source that was.
I'm just reading the report.
It's a food service vendor, so that would have been the payments to Sedexo. I assume, I don't.
There you go, you're right, you're right. Yeah, so we, we had Sedexo for, I don't even know how many years.
Twenty-some years.
Twenty-some years and that cost of that contract is very significant, was very significant. Now we do it in-house. So yes.
But the point is, we didn't do a purchase order because.
I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the definition of it based on kind of how things have been working. And it was that there was always a purchase order unless it was a utility because those are variable things.
Those two examples, I think, would be in some ways similar to event, I'm not an expert here, to a vendor, because we had a monthly payment to Sedexo. We have a monthly payment for our health insurance benefits.
But the board oversaw the contract and signed the contract.
Yeah, that's what that, but that's what those, those two are almost like an electricity bill.
Yeah, and there was no PO for it because it was a signed contract.
Exactly.
So we're at that point where the past is the past. So moving forward, I mean, we can sit here and go back and forth on the past, right? We're, we're here to move forward and we, we understand, we asked our questions on what was going on to find what we thought a PO should be for and what it shouldn't be. So now moving forward, we need to update these two policies and regulations here. And stating what we want to put a PO for, and, and personally, I, I mean, I think a PO should be put in for everything, but I, I'm all for utilities, like, we don't need to come in here and purchase. As long as we have attachments saying, hey, this is what we had for the receipt and the statement, this is what we paid. I, I agree, we don't need phone bill, gas, electric, such like that. Anything else, though, outside of utilities, I, I see we need to have a purchasing order. And it needs to be tracked, it needs to be put in a central location along with our contracts. Those all need to be put in a central location with the, um, the three bids that were put onto it, who we chose and the amount. I know we had that discussion last time. I want to bring it up and reiterate again. I think we've discussed it too at the end, that I was told to find the contracts. We can either go back in the meeting minutes or we can go to the section heads. That's unsatisfactory, one hundred percent. If we don't have a central repository for our contracts, which are some of our largest expenditures besides the teachers, then we have an issue where we can't find it or we have to search around. That needs to be put in a central repository, especially when we come in budget seeding, or season, we're making budgets. We need to know what contracts we have that we're going to be using, whether it's going to have an, every year it's going to increase or it's going to stay the same, when it's going to cancel, who we got to go for again. If it's only a five-year contract we're coming up, we need a new contract, who our new vendor is going to be. Things are changing all the time. So getting an organized, I've just noticed there's a lot of disorganizations going on. And maybe it's not the POs, but that, that's just playing a hand in hand. And, and I think getting a monthly expense report for everything that is distributed to the board at the same time so that we can all get on the same page and we're not getting discombobulated here, I think that starts in the right direction moving forward. I think if we get this going and get more organized, I think that, that can help us just grow in the future.
All right.
I agree. I wouldn't, I, I don't see why anybody wouldn't want that.
Any more discussions on the topic?
We need to get the documents to match. The numbers are two, are two different numbers. So we need to agree on a limit that can be approved without board approval.
So you want to change what's currently in place?
Well, the two documents don't reflect the same thing. So we either have to pick fifty or we go to twenty-five, but they have to be the same number.
Wouldn't go up, the law goes up.
Change to fifty and the regulation is within the purview of the superintendent that has not been updated.
The law goes up to a hundred.
Right.
And so you have leeway up to that point.
Right.
And, you know, as I think it's already been mentioned, but I just want to stress there, this applies to contracts for school buildings, improvements, supplies, equipment. Emergencies are an exception. So I think that concern was brought up. Books, materials and instruction, those are excluded. And the intergovernmental purchasing organizations are an exclusion as well. I think that was brought up. So I just want to, so everyone's operating from the same playbook. So you have that leeway to go up to a hundred with the contracts for the areas that would be within your purview, the buildings, improvements, supplies, goods. You just decide where you want to go and amend your policy and make a regulation consistent with that.
Make a motion.
So we're at fifty thousand because you guys kept having issues, assuming, not issues, but multiple items coming up over there. So if we go back and we table that motion for the time being, and we go back and we see some of the purchase orders and we can actually get some background and see what some of these costs and see how minor some of them were. And then we do an analysis to see if twenty-five or fifty thousand might be there instead, instead of going straight now. I think if we look at some of the purchase or previous ones to see like what some of those purchases were from the twenty-five to fifty thousand range, where we would have had a vote on it prior to, before we actually make a decision.
Realistically speaking, how long would it take to get all items that were approved under fifty thousand dollars in your hands before it's pointless? The whole point is understanding what was spent under fifty thousand dollars to see if we need to change it. That could take months?
No, I, I don't.
I wouldn't say every single item. Yeah, I wouldn't say every single item, but you guys talk about items having to be broke down from, down to twenty-five thousand dollars. If you got a certain, so ask this question. If you're getting something that you needed to buy and it's fifty thousand dollars, instead of taking it to the board, were you breaking it down to two twenty-five thousand dollar purchases?
No, that's specifically.
Well, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm asking like, so when you were saying.
We don't.
No, no, I didn't say like that, but I'm saying, how were you going about it before? Were you just bringing every single order to the board?
Anything over twenty-five thousand dollars.
So what were some, what were some of the items that were reaching the twenty-five that was getting to the point where they're?
Example of, of a pump, like if you have a pump that goes out and it's.
But that's an emergency, though. That should have been.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
I mean.
General, we put generators in before because, you know, we had to wait on things because we didn't consider it like an emergency because we could fix it with a generator and have a temporary fix during the time that we get the purchase order in place.
I'm not saying we're trying to get more control, but we're in a budget situation. I, I just feel like we need to watch our spending. We need to, I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying moving forward, I think we have a new board up here. You're retiring.
Yes.
We need to set a precedent where we need to watch what we're doing with the money so that we're not falling even more behind and we're losing more resources and people. And that keeps happening, we're going to watch our good educators leave.
You do know why we are in this crisis.
I understand that, but we have to try to fix it some way, shape, form.
I, I.
We can't sit here and blame the state and the blueprint forever. We can't sit here and blame the state and the blueprint forever.
No, but we.
No, we can't, but you have to understand why we're there.
I do understand that, but I'm trying to find a solution.
I think we can look at it, though, from the perspective of the budget. What is our, our biggest, um, cost in our budget and it's our people, right? About 85% of it comes. And then if you look at, so you have 85% of that goes to our staff, rightfully so, deservingly so. And then you have, so you have 15%, and how much of that is actual fixed costs that we have no control over? Gas, electric, transportation, um, fuel, so you look at that. You start to really super narrow on what we even do have control over and making decisions on. And that, that gets down to $5,000, $500,000 worth of textbooks. So all of those purchases come through unless we were to, to, you know, buy, um, replacement materials that happen to be $10,000 for an elementary school or something like that. But you get down to, you're very narrowed in the amount of purchase orders that we, that. I don't want you to get the perception that $100 million over $110 million is something that we have control over, because we don't. We're contractually obligated at 85% for salaries. We're contractually obligated for transportation, fuel, telephone costs, you know what I mean? So when you, you really narrow that down, you're not talking about a lot of legal room. So I, I appreciate you wanting to come in and just trim everything down and really look at it and be more efficient. And, and, and I'm, and I'm more than willing to sit down and look at those contracts with you or have someone provide that information, but I do also want to give credit where credit's due. You know, we have a COO who's been here for over 20 years and does a phenomenal job. We have Daryl Bearclo who does a phenomenal job. We have really good people in place that are looking at purchase orders, that are looking out at vendors and are selecting vendors that are going to bring the best to our district. We only have the best interest in mind for our district to save money and get that to our kids. And so I really want us to kind of try to focus on that just a little bit. Um, I really appreciate the feedback.
I'm never saying that they weren't doing their job a good job, never once said that. Never once said, never said, once they, I didn't have the best.
Disorganized and we need to get back on track and we need to trim costs and, and I hear all of that and I appreciate those comments.
But I didn't say they weren't doing their job. That's not saying they're doing, not doing their job.
Here's, here's a, here's a suggestion.
Appreciate the comments, I do.
Wait, here's a suggestion, go back to what our budget was before COVID. Figure, let's figure what that is and then we see what the difference is. Because all of the money we got that got us to this point with all the people that we have were funds that we got that have now expired and we're not getting them anymore. This is not a profit, for-profit organization.
I'm not saying it's for-profit.
It's a, it's an organization that is fed.
Teachers and we are cutting crazy amount of, I get it. I'm, I'm, I, I understand it's not a for-profit, I'm not coming in and running like a business.
Good teachers are going to leave.
I know, but we don't have the money, but we got to figure out where to spend the money.
We're not the only ones, where are we going to get the money from? Where's it coming from?
We're trying to. Do we just keep spending the same amount and calling it a day and saying, ah, ah, we're screwed?
We didn't do that, and in all fairness, if we look at the summary from, um, last year even, and we looked at it compared to the 12 years prior to that in Sid's departments, nothing had been increased, but yet inflation was at least 4%.
I agree, inflation is rampant right now, of course.
If you look at it, that Mr. Pinder's categories, even though he has every bit of documentation that he came to the budget table saying, I need more money, he got flat funded. So if you flat fund his areas over a 12-year period, then you're going to.
Makes sense.
Right, because then you're always going to be over budget in that area. So last year, in all fairness, our team sat down and we provided a budget that was balanced that increased all of those areas. So we did that last year, we brought it to the commissioners. But unfortunately, with the cliff of ESER and the cliff of, um, um, what's the other big grant? I can't think of it right now, the one that Amanda and them.
Leeds.
The Leeds grant money, all of those grant fundings went away. So it put us in like, almost like the worst, like, storm, you know what I mean? It was all these factors together, um, that, that for years, this organization did not recognize inflation. Well before I came here, well before.
Been here four years, so I mean, this has been an ongoing issue.
It's been a very ongoing issue. And when you come in and you have woefully underfunded line items, we didn't even have a line item for furniture when I got here. We didn't have a line item for painting when I got here. We, we were not maintaining the way that we needed to maintain. And when you don't, then it catches up to you. And just like with textbooks, we are so, we are so far behind in textbooks. I can't, and our line item is only $500,000. And for a district this size, it should be a million dollars or more. So, so this has been an ongoing issue year after year after year. And we come in and our team tries to make it right, but then we fall in our face because of the ESER funds and the Leeds funds that we kind of pumped into schools to try to make it better. We bought cafeteria tables with some of our, our ESER money. We bought some desks and chairs with that, we bought some books with it, I mean.
What is ESER money? I just don't know what ESER money is.
It's just relief money that they provided to the districts to be able. Yeah, yeah, to be able to provide, um, and it, and it had different guidelines. Some of it was just for tutoring, some of it was for, um, your, um, like for distancing and, you know, when we.
Is this what the reading, what was the reading and math specialists funded by?
Well, some of them were local, definitely, but some of them were supported by some of our Leeds money and some of our ESER.
Tutoring was like ESER 3, there was three levels of ESER, three levels of ESER. It started like with like the, the cleaning supplies and things like that. And then it started to shift, I think love, ESER 2 was kind of a mix and then ESER 3 was a lot of like, you were able to use it for staffing and things like that. So like the tutoring was in ESER 3.
Right, so I mean, in all fairness, like this has been an ongoing issue and it's kind of like the perfect storm when, you know, blueprint is not our friend right now as it relates to that. And, and, and honestly, we are not, I sent, I actually sent the board two articles today. I'm sure you probably didn't have time to read them, but it, it just tells you that superintends were sounding the alarm on this out of the gate, out of the gate. And nobody wanted to listen to us and they just kept plugging through and plugging through. And now every district is in an area where they're not going to be able to sustain. We are not the only ones, I can tell you, Cecil County, their pre, our kindergarten classes are 30 and more. 30 in kindergarten classes. So, you know, we, at this point, I feel like in some instances should feel a little blessed, because, did you look at our enrollment numbers now? Yes. Do we have a second grade class here that has 26 students or whatever? We do, but on average, overall, we're not ballooned out. But will we be because of everything that's going on? We're headed in that direction, we've done everything we can to, to, to kind of mitigate that. And now it's just getting to a point where we don't have any more resources to mitigate it. But we have cut and cut and cut every little place that we can cut in order to make sure all of our dollars are going into salaries and into helping, um, teachers with supplies. And, um, you know, it, we, we've worked really hard, we, we've worked really hard on the budget. Have we had CFO issues? Yes, we had a CFO that up and quit in the middle of July two years ago. We brought on another CFO, he was from Delaware. Delaware, apparently their structure of money is extremely different. It's actually navigated at the state level, not navigated at the LEA. So after a month, he said, I, I, I can't, so he up and left. And we just haven't had that success. Dr. Kibler said it not too long ago, last year we had six CFO positions open in the state of Maryland because of the amount of, um, you know, reporting, 179 reports plus all of your blueprint stuff that gets down to the individual student and to the individual school level. So those are all challenging times, but I agree with you, it's time to ju, we have to keep looking forward. We can't, we can't look back and say, oh, but we did it all wrong and well was us and, you know, no. You're right, we have to be like, we got to move forward. How do we move forward and create and develop a plan of action where we can do best by kids? And, um, we're happy to get you information that you need, but I, I, I just feel like sometimes maybe getting a little more educated with the whole piece of it before we start kind of throwing out things that, um, you know, that have a huge impact or. And, and I appreciate you saying, hey, let's, let's, let's go get some information before we change it to 25,000 or before we change it to 100,000, let's get more information. I, I appreciate that thought pattern instead of just kind of haphazardly just saying, you know, we, we've had problems and we're going to change this and make it this, so I, I do appreciate that.
So next week, we have a budget meeting. And moving forward, what I'm saying is, we can sit here and talk about what happened in the past and kudos to everybody and all the excuses of why we are in this situation. Yeah, right, it's, it's going to get worse. So if it's going to get worse, then we need to come together and sit down, and whether that's grinding this out day in, day out, we need to set these meetings so we can find a way forward where we, it, yes, it's going to get worse, but we can't keep operating in a deficit. Because we're just going to keep going worse and worse and worse. So whether that's a possible or plausible situation that we can absolutely make happen, we got to do our damnedest to make it happen. And, and I know we have meetings with the commissioners, but that's one 30-minute meeting a month? Do we not think we should probably request that the commissioners come and we all sit down with them and hash this out a little bit more? Because one 30-minute meeting with the commissioners a month is not to, to discuss the entire school situation? That is way not.
Well, that's, I mean, we do meet, like our financial teams meet together more often than that. That's just for, you know, the executive team level to kind of bring up maybe some hot topics that are in the community at the time. So I don't want you to think that's the only time that, um, we, we meet with their staff and their financial staff.
Can we set up meetings with the commissioners that is strictly?
Talked to them when we were there yesterday. They are looking at the schedule, we need to have a conversation.
It needs to be more than a conversation, though. Please, commissioners, we need to sit down and hash this out some way, shape, form. It doesn't need to be just a conversation.
I understand.
It needs to be an actual working group where we go through it with them. Because there's mixed stories by commissioners and.
Well, they have their own financial group that we participate in. And, I mean, so I don't know, maybe if you want to try to join that, I, I don't know if that, if the commissioners will find that appropriate or not appropriate or if that will be their decision. But maybe so you can get a better idea of some of the things that we are doing, um, to communicate with them. We're, we're pretty open with them, um, we actually have capital operational, um, meetings with them. You know, we have different times.
Had one last one.
Yeah, we, we have capital meetings with them, we have operational meetings with them. Our financial teams talk to each other, um, they have a, a spending and affordability that we'll not committee with them. So there are some things that, it's not that we just meet with the commissioners for a half an hour. I don't want you to get that impression. We, we definitely communicate with them on a regular basis and, um, so please understand that we do work with them collaboratively.
I didn't say you didn't, but I'm just, it doesn't, the perception and where we're going with the budget and working with the commissioners and what was said prior to and what's going on, it's just not aligning to where we're not getting to where we need to be. And there's some, there's a disconnect going on and we need to figure out where this disconnect is so we can fix it.
Okay, I appreciate your perception on that.
We have two more items on this agenda and I'd like to get them through so we could go back into closed session. It is already, um, not that it matters, but it's 9/11. And so there are some people we probably should release, so let's finish up our meeting. The next is the Citizens Advisory Council appointments. Are there members of the, I think what you're looking for, members of the board that have names? Or do you already have a list of the people that are on the new committee?
So we, the history of this for the past few years has been we've, we've solicited the names over the summer, early fall to, to set the, the council for the year. This, this is your group that, that, we have a staff member that runs. We certainly could add more people, but they're, they're in the middle of it now and, and that's fine. I, I, I didn't put this on here, I, I think we.
We need to add, um, one board member, because the policy states that one board member is supposed to be on the CAC and the SSIC. And I don't think, for the past two years I've been here, I know we haven't had a board member.
That's not true.
That's not true, Helen was on, Helen and Mark, at one point.
Yeah, they, they were always invited, I can show you the attendance sheet, she wasn't always able to come.
She was the lead board person.
I actually had to change the meeting dates to accommodate Ms. Bennett's, um, schedule as well. She didn't always attend, but I changed it because she had a conflict on the standing meeting. So, so she, she was not always there, she was always invited and she was the representative.
Okay, so as a board, can we discuss who wants to be the representative on each committee and then?
It's only.
It's only the one.
It's only the one.
It says, the S, the policy says the Queen Anne's County, um, Citizens Advisory Council and it says a board member and then the SSIC, that one also says one board member. Is that not anymore that council?
Uh, this, again, so when these, when these, this is historical perspective, I, like, being directed to do these things. So the Citizens Advisory Council was the boards, the boards group. I think, I can speak for you, Dr. Salins, you, you liked the idea of it, also decided to make a school system improvement committee made up of staff members. We had invited Ms. Bennett to both because she was the person dedicated to the groups. She chose not to go to the school system improvement committee. That does not mean a purse, a board member, there's not a trainee aside.
But I also just want to say that the content was the same and that's why she chose not to.
It was the same agenda for both groups.
Okay, but moving forward, it says.
Let me just say, the president of the board appoints the board member who's going to be a member of each of these. So if you'd like to go do that now.
And she did that, so I, personally, I got enough board member, board activities to go to.
Okay.
I'm not interested, anybody interested in going, you want to go?
Close session, can we discuss this and then we can?
You should appoint it.
No, we should do it now.
Who's going to be?
Do you want to, I mean, do you want to be the member or does anybody else have?
When these things meet, can you give us like a, an idea of when they meet or?
Yes.
She's going to have to, you have to come up to the mic, yeah, can you come up to the mic, though?
She literally just plugged it in, because it was going down. Four dates, they meet quarterly?
And this is for both or just the CAC?
They're the same.
So they're the same, the same exact group or?
No.
Same night, what, SSIC meets at 4:15 to accommodate teachers' schedules as they are released from the buildings. And then the, uh, the Citizens Advisory Council meets roughly a half hour, 45 minutes after at 6:00.
After that same night, okay.
It's always, it's always the same.
Okay, and if I wrote them down correctly, our next meeting is on the 29th of January. And then we have, they're on Wednesdays, um, the 19th of February, the 26th of March and the 23rd of April.
And then do any of them cross over with our board meeting?
No, no, all on Wednesdays, that's, that's how we.
So I think I, when I originally made the meetings, I did the second Tuesday or second Wednesday of the month. And I always did Wednesdays because I was trying to accommodate the board, I mean, I, I. But we had to switch it, I think, to the fourth Wednesday to accommodate Ms. Bennett's, uh, schedule, if I remember right. But anyway.
Because that makes sense, because if we go back into working groups and move to.
It's first and third.
That's why we didn't do the third yet, yeah, I was trying to, well, because I was.
Fourth Wednesday, makes sense, absolutely.
So.
It's not always great, because it might fall on spring break or like, you, you know, things like that. So I mean, sometimes it fluctuates a little bit. During the budget season, I think I had to pick some Tuesdays last year because there was almost a budget work session every week anyway, too. So, um, it fluctuates a little bit, but the general idea was that.
So we can do a board member and an alternate?
Yeah, or, and, well, as a board, do you guys want to do one person for each or one person to go to both? I mean, it's, it's not individual.
If it's the same meeting.
I feel, you mean?
Why would you go to both?
Well, if it's the same meeting, why is it two different groups then?
Because one is the staff and one is the citizens.
What are you offering?
It's the exact same agenda.
By law, through the law, and then one is just my purview that I felt like it was a good thing to get input from our schools and our teachers and our staff members and our administrators. So I felt like, but it's not by law, I don't, we don't have to have an SSIC. That was just something that I felt would be helpful for me.
Do people attend?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't know if people, if there's a larger group of people that consistently.
Snacks at the second meeting?
What kind of snacks? All right, so how about we have one for each?
Yeah, that's fine, that's who, if, anybody got any takers, Shannon's out, so.
You got that right.
So this is at, like, where is this being held, sorry?
Here.
Oh, gotcha, okay, gotcha. Oh, gotcha, okay, gotcha, I need a minute, my life is too complicated to do this on the spot, I need a second to process these dates, to be honest.
I can do one if somebody wants to do the other.
I don't mind taking one, I just don't know right now which dates I can do.
I mean, does it, can we, can I offer this, does it have to be, could, do you wanna just make the commitment that a board member will be at each one? And it may change month to month, and you guys will determine that month to month, as long as somebody.
That's perfect.
Done.
Thank you.
Get to most of them, but I don't know about all of them.
Right, yeah.
Budget discussion, no.
Okay, so, this had been on there as a standing item, yeah, it had been on there as a standing item, that that I personally my apologies, probably should have taken off, but the bottom line is, I was just gonna say, we have a budget meeting next week, the um, the governor's budget actually dropped today. Um, CFOs are engaging in that tomorrow, um, it'll hit out kind of more publicly, um, in a different format on the seventeenth, which is Friday. Um, that'll give us at least a starting point of kind to understand what our state figures are gonna be. Um, but definitely not where we need them to be, and um, I think our preliminary assessment today was about a million dollars more than where we were last year, last year, we were at nine hundred and ninety-five thousand from the state, but two hundred and seventy-three of that was designated for our community school, and so if you subtract that out, it wasn't a whole lot of money, so if you add a million to that. We're we're not sitting in a place where we're able to do our enhancement packages and things like that, that we have in contract, so. Um, we have a great relationship with our commissioners, they have been extremely, extremely, extremely supportive of us. And so, um, I know that that they have a number in their head, um, of how they're going to support us to get to where we need to go, but um, it's not over yet, we don't have any formal um, state, you know, numbers yet, but that was just in what was dropped today, so. Stay tuned, stay tuned.
Anybody else for public comment? Going once, going twice, so, um, future meetings, budget working session, January twenty-second at four thirty. Three thirty, we're going to adjust that because of the topics, the length of topics. Um, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, open session, move back into closed. So moved. All those in favor?